Facility where you used to be, the Mayor of Burbank would be there. Instead, you're in Hollywood. So the Mayor of LA is here.
This project is expected to generate millions of dollars of economic activity in this neighborhood, and it will bring lots of jobs.
We're gonna have electricians and plumbers and carpenters, ironworkers.
In all, the project is expected to create 600 local jobs. In Hollywood, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
Construction is expected to last about a year and a half with the campus opening to students in 2014. The man who has worked tirelessly for eight years as the city's HIV/AIDS coordinator is leaving his post, but not before being honored by the city he served.
It is estimated that 45,000 people in the city of Los Angeles have been diagnosed with HIV and AIDS since the beginning of the epidemic. And since 1989, the city of Los Angeles has been educating citizens on the disease and helping to prevent it from spreading with the help of its HIV/AIDS Coordinator's Office.
I am the fifth AIDS Coordinator since Mayor Bradley created this position. I'm one of the three surviving AIDS Coordinators because we lost the other two to the epidemic.
Steven Simon has served the city for eight years and is now leaving his post to advocate for HIV awareness with a private firm.
Steve, you've saved lives. You have saved lives with the awareness and those who have been and are HIV, you've kept them going.
Simon instead reflected on what his predecessors had been able to do throughout the years with the support of the city council.
We enacted the world's first HIV/AIDS anti-discrimination law in housing and employment. We have always been at the forefront of this epidemic, so it's always been a matter of pride that I've been able to be a part of that.
Council members recall how Simon led by example, asking for city leaders themselves to take an HIV test.
He would actually take swabs from us and show people just how easy it was.
Simon received the recognition in council just as council proclaimed March 20th, 2012, National Native American HIV/AIDS Awareness Day here in the city of Los Angeles.
Steven, you have been a great ally, advocate, both locally and nationally for our Native American community, and I want to honor and say thank you with that.
The Red Circle Project, which receives assistance from the city's AIDS Coordinator's Office, is the only HIV/AIDS prevention program in Los Angeles County that specifically provides services to the Native American, Alaska Native, community.
If our people are affected by this disease, we are not only losing a family member, a tribal member, a culture, a language, we're losing a whole people.
With the exit of the city's HIV/AIDS Coordinator comes a reminder that the work of educating and preventing the disease is everyone's responsibility.
Fighting discrimination is the mission of the Anti-Defamation League, or ADL, and as Gil Reyes tells us, the organization has joined with local law enforcement to honor those who have taken a stand against hate.
Among the honorees, LAPD Officer Manuel Arregue. He organized a truce between African-American and Latino gangs in North Hollywood by first reaching out to their families' church leaders.
One of our core values is to treat everybody with fairness, and that's similar to what the ADL also stands for.
The ADL, or Anti-Defamation League, holds its annual awards ceremony. The awards dubbed "The Helene and Joseph Sherwood Family Prize" for combating hate and bigotry. In all, five individuals and law enforcement agencies are being honored for going above and beyond the call with a message that combating hate crime is a team effort.
So the ADL, Los Angeles Police Department, Sheriff's Department, FBI, the other public safety agencies that are here today, it's a moment to bask in the sun.
So many of them have invited their kids and their families because they don't get this kind of recognition, so it's really, it's a joy to be able to do this.
Also honored, LA Superior Court Judge David Wesley for his innovative teen courtroom. The courtroom puts high school troublemakers on trial with a jury of their own peers.
Empowering young adults to take an active role in identifying and stemming juvenile crime in their own communities.
Ashley Williams, a self-proclaimed former troublemaker, was mentored by Wesley and became a teen court judge herself.
Thanks to his love and support through my college career, I will be graduating UCLA in June and attending law school, working towards my goal of becoming a judge.
Law enforcement working alongside communities to reduce hate crimes in Los Angeles. At the Skirball Cultural Center, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Also honored, the multi-agency task force that put a deadly Konoka Park Street gang behind bars. Police say the gang targeted African-Americans. Little Tokyo's Japanese-American Museum played host to an international summit that aims to move Japan forward a year after the catastrophic earthquake and tsunami that destroyed parts of the country, and Anna Marcos has more.
The world watched their TV screens in horror as wave after wave swallowed entire Japanese villages. It's been a year since the March 2011 earthquake that caused the devastating tsunami off the coast of Japan. Some of the tsunami's young survivors have crossed the ocean to help Japanese-Americans in LA mark the one-year anniversary at this US-Japan Council Summit.
I lost my father to the tsunami. Because of the big earthquake, it's much easier. Your hearts make our hearts very warm.
Mayor Antonio Villarreal also on hand to help remember a day that these survivors and those with loved ones in Japan will never forget.
I have two about your age. Can't fathom the pain of what it must be like to lose your father in the way that you have.
But this summit is about looking to the future and not just the past. The US-Japan Council has introduced a new public-private partnership called Tomodachi, which means friends in Japanese. It's raising money to support Japan's recovery efforts. So far, the partnership has raised close to $3 million.
What I was most encouraged by was really the resolve of the people.
But much more progress needs to happen before Japan can truly move forward. Organizers at this summit hope their efforts at raising money will help. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The new partnership, Tomodachi, will also help support programs that strengthen cultural and economic ties with Japan. City officials and community leaders celebrate the completion of two new Hanson Dam projects. Rasha Goel explains.
The wetlands restoration and parking lot and a new skate park are the two latest improvements at the Hanson Dam Recreation Center. Both are enhancements which will help the local community recreationally and environmentally.
All of these features had to, had to take on the challenge of, of the environment and work to ensure that we were doing these things in a way that was consistent with the environment.
The skate park is a 6,000-square-foot concrete development that includes rails, bowls, banks, and other skateboarding features, as well as new native planting and an irrigation system.
If you look at what the number-one requested facility is in this city, it's skate parks. And so we felt it necessary, and the council office felt it necessary, and I think as an assembly member we felt it necessary, that we bring these facilities to the community.
The Hanson Dam Wetlands Restoration and Parking Lot Project was funded by the voter-approved Proposition O.
130-acre watershed is treated through this system of basins and parking lots. And the basins that hold the rain when it comes should drain in about 72 hours. It also serves as groundwater recharge.
Officials say these improvements are just the beginning of beautifying what they call "the best park in the valley." In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Animal shelters in Los Angeles are struggling financially, just like anyone else, but they recently got a boost when a food manufacturer donated pet food to help feed the animals. Yana Kay has more.
These adorable puppies are having a great time playing with each other at the North Central Animal Shelter, which has struggled to make its budget work to take care of the animals. But now, thanks to a generous donation from pet food manufacturer Solid Gold, the shelter has got some much-needed help.
This is an amazing gift. It's just incredible. We love it. Our animals are gonna be comfortable, well-fed, and happy as a result of this wonderful donation.
Friends of LA Animal Shelters, an organization that helps LA animal services, teamed up with Solid Gold to donate 20 tons of pet food, which can feed about 1,800 cats and dogs for one week. Officials say that pet food prices have increased 10% to 20%, making it difficult for shelters to work within their budgets.
So we decided to work very, very hard with different companies to be able to donate items to city shelters.
Officials at Friends of LA and other animal lovers are encouraging other businesses to take a stand and get involved in their community animal shelters, just like Solid Gold did.
I think that's just, that's very nice of them, and I wish other companies would realize that it's also their job and their responsibility to help out.
Officials say any kind of help will go a long way in making sure these cute canines continue to lead happy and healthy lives. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
The donation was shared between the city's six animal shelters. The huge boulder destined for a local museum finally arrives at its destination. Also, no more billboards parked along LA streets, and it's time to get your dog license. These stories and more in City Beat.
The 340-ton boulder has finally made its long journey from Acquarian Riverside to the Los Angeles County Museum of Art to be part of Michael Heiser's Levitated Mass exhibit. The over 21-foot-high boulder made a 12-day journey from the quarry to arrive at the museum. Our LA This Week camera captured the megalith as it parked for a public viewing near USC at Figueroa Street back on March 9. The artwork will make its official debut at LACMA in November. That's when visitors will be able to walk beneath the levitated mass. The Los Angeles City Council has unanimously approved a ban on all mobile billboards, which residents say are a neighborhood blight.
This is whether they are standing alone or attached to a motor vehicle on any Los Angeles city street.
The new ban requires the city to issue a warning to a first-time offender at least 24 hours before impounding the vehicle. Subsequent citations would include a fine and possible jail time. The Los Angeles Parks Foundation partnered with the USC School of Landscape and Architecture to assess, develop, and conceptualize an ideal urban park for the city of Los Angeles. Those improvements can be found at Hoover Recreation Center, located at 101025th Street in Councilman Ed Reyes's district. At the park, you'll find new fitness equipment and a walking trail. The Los Angeles Parks Foundation received a generous donation from the Warner Family Foundation to support the construction of these park enhancements. And if you haven't gotten your dog's license yet, now's the time to do it. Amnesty for late dog license fees expires on the last day of this month. Humane officers will be canvassing Los Angeles city parks and neighborhoods, checking for current dog licenses. Dogs with license tags can easily be identified and returned home if lost. It costs $20 to license a spayed or neutered dog. An unspayed or unneutered dog costs $100 or more to license. More information can be found at anionlinelicense.lacity.org.
Lizards, turtles, and snakes, oh my! There's now more to see at the LA Zoo where a new exhibition features some endangered and rare species. Rasha Goel has more.
Nine years in the making, and now the lair, or living amphibians, invertebrates, and reptiles exhibit is finally open.
But that's a wonderful exhibit that not only talks about reptiles and the connection to that nature, but in the modern world, how we have to build sustainable, valued buildings.
The new facility at the Los Angeles Zoo features 49 exhibits in six themed areas, including one named Betty's Bite and Squeeze Room after actress and zoo advocate Betty White, and a building with a green roof.
There's live plants up there, soil and live plants. It helps reduce the heat that goes back up into the atmosphere and reduce global warming. The plants obviously add oxygen to the environment as well.
The murals in the building, as you walk through, you will see, are all hand-painted with different art, by different artists, representing the natural habitats of the animal places in the exhibits.
At this exhibit, there are over 60 species of amphibians, invertebrates, and reptiles from across the world, including places such as Africa and China. In fact, I'm sitting next to the world's largest amphibian, the Chinese giant salamander. There are a total of four in the country. Two of them are here in Los Angeles. And according to zoo officials, the exhibit gives guests a chance to get up close and personal with these unique creatures.
The fact that you can be nose-to-nose with a green mamba, one of the deadliest creatures on the planet, safely, I think is a pretty cool experience.
This place is just amazing. If you like bugs and reptiles, you know, it's definitely a place to be.
And even if bugs and reptiles are not your favorites, it's still worth checking out some of these creatures who were on this earth even before we were. From Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
In this week's list of things to do, a musical flashback to the '80s, a special day at the zoo for scouts, and an exhibit on one of the Beatles coming to an end at a museum near you.
If you love the '80s, then you'll want to catch the worldwide party musical, Rock of Ages, at the Pantages Theater. The story goes, in 1987 on the Sunset Strip, a small-town girl meets a big-city rocker, and they fall in love to the greatest songs of the '80s. You can catch the musical Saturday, March 24th, at 8:00 PM at the Pantages at 6233 Hollywood Boulevard. For other dates and ticket information, go to pantages-theater.com. The LA Zoo is offering junior Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts the opportunity to earn a special zoo patch and spend the day learning about zoos, zoo careers, animals, and conservation. It's all part of its Zoo World Patch Program, which takes place Saturday, March 24th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The LA Zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. To find out the cost and to make reservations, call 323-644-4211, extension zero. And it's your last chance to catch the George Harrison Living in the Material World exhibit at the Grammy Museum at LA Live. The exhibit, which opened in October of last year following the broadcast premiere of Martin Scorsese's documentary of the same name, ends Sunday, March 25th. The exhibit on the 12-time Grammy Award winner features dozens of items from the private collection of the Harrison estate, including photographs, Harrison's stage costumes, instruments, and personal sketchbooks. The Grammy Museum is located at 800 West Olympic Boulevard, Suite A245. More info can be found at gramymuseum.org. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
Everybody knows about Chinese New Year, but in LA's Chinatown, just like in the old country, the impending arrival of spring brought out families to celebrate another festival, the Lantern Festival.
The El Pueblo de los Angeles Historical Monument came alive with the clanging of gongs and the rhythmic dancing of dragons. What's usually the home of Overa Street was transformed into a modern interpretation of a Chinese village during the Lantern Festival.
We are here on sacred ground because this is where the original Chinatown was. About 3,000 people, 160 years, we celebrate. Chinese Americans here who have made this city as strong as it is, and the Lantern Festival is a recognition of them.
The Chinese came to California during the gold rush and stayed to help build our nation's railroads. Today, the Chinese-American Museum, located at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, tells the stories of the earliest Chinese-Americans.
Wonderful displays that talks about, not only about Chinese history, but history of everyone who's ever come to Los Angeles.
But on this day, it was all about the museum's 11th Annual Lantern Festival, which signals the closing of the Chinese New Year festivities.
The analogy I like to use is that Lantern Festival is akin to the Sunday brunch at the end of the Thanksgiving weekend, when fathering, when family gatherings must come to an end and everybody needs to return to their respective places of daily living and work.
Just like the public streets in old China, the El Pueblo courtyard was festooned with colorful lanterns of all shapes and sizes, which represent joyfulness, luck, and the return of spring.
It's a great event. It has gone on for thousands of years. But we also get to celebrate the Chinese history, the influence, and the contribution to this great, great city.
The Miss Chinatown pageant queen and princesses livened up the festivities even further when they visited the festival-dawning tiaras and traditional Chinese dresses. An auspicious end to Chinese New Year celebrations and the beginning of a prosperous year to come.
Chinatown was moved from its original location at the El Pueblo Historical Monument to its current location in 1938. As Chinese-Americans wind down their New Year celebration, Iranian-Americans begin theirs, called Nouruz, which marks the beginning of spring. Anita Bennett takes us to the city's annual Persian New Year festivities at City Hall.
Nouruz, Mubarak, that's Happy New Year for many of our Los Angeles residents who are of Persian descent.
For the eighth straight year, Los Angeles marked Nouruz, the Persian New Year with the celebration at City Hall.
Nouruz, the Persian New Year, symbolizes that unique human trait, hope, which allows all of us to move past the difficulties of today and imagine a tomorrow full of possibilities to be better, to do better, to love better, and to be, to better understand the ways of nature.
The tradition dates back thousands of years and is celebrated by people of Iranian descent around the world. As for LA's festivities, they were spearheaded by Councilman Tony Carthens as a way of honoring the city's Persian residents and workers.
There are over 300 Iranian-Americans that work in various professions and capacities right here for the city of Los Angeles.
Then the councilman made a special presentation to the leaders of the Persian community.
And the celebration continued here in the rotunda of City Hall, and among those taking part, Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Villarreal.
It's an opportunity for us to be grateful for the many contributions of Persian culture and Iranian people here in Los Angeles.
The festivities drew residents from across LA County.
It's very important for us, and the more important thing is Americans are recognizing our New Year. And actually, we are very, very honored to be here in the City Hall and celebrate our New Year.
And it's strengthened the, the community that we have in Los Angeles. That's why we always get together here to celebrate the old tradition for the Iranian people.
This is just the start of the celebration, as Nouruz lasts a total of 13 days. At City Hall, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
G'day, Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Mr. Luvan has arrived.
Mr. Corretz is here. Call the members, Sergeant, call the members. Mr. Englander is here. Sargent, find me two more members. Okay, Mr. Weezer's here. Mr. Weezer's here, so we should have a quorum. So at this point in time, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Let's call the roll.
Very good, sir. Alarcon, Buscaino, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Corretz, Kirkorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Zine seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves, Mr. Corretz second. So at this point in time, I think we're waiting, we're gonna have a presentation in a minute, so let us run through the agenda.
Mr. President, Items 1 and 2 are items noted for public hearing. There is a request from members to continue Item 2 to April 11.
Without objection. Any cards on Item, what is it, Item 1?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, then we'll hold that. Let's move to the next section.
Items 3 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials members? Any cards?
Sir, yes, there are cards. I do believe public hearing was satisfied in committee for these matters, however.
Okay, then why don't we open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
The next section of items?
Items 9 through 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection.
Mr. President, we do have cards in that section for Items 14 and 15.
So we have cards on 14 and 15? Is that what you said, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, 14 and 15 have cards.
Members, specials, Mr. Weezer?
No special on this, but eighth, number eight, fourth with, please.
Okay, eighth, number eight, fourth with. Members, no specials. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next section?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, Items 16 and 17 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection. Any cards?
Yes, sir, we have cards on both, 16 and 17.
Okay. We've got it. We've got it. All right. That brings us to public comment, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, public comment, Items, on Items not on council's agenda.
Okay, so with that said, Mr. Cardenas, are you ready?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We have a great presentation today to honor some of our finest workers in the city of Los Angeles. We have thousands and thousands of wonderful workers here in the city, but today, we're gonna take the time to honor our GSD Fleet Services achievements here in the city of Los Angeles. Let me explain that Street Services was established in 1979 in our city. Fleet Services now employs 428 employees and is responsible for the maintenance and dispatch of over 11,000 vehicles that belong to the city of Los Angeles, including aircraft and special equipment for the city's departments. These employees have gone beyond the call of duty by performing safety inspections during non-working hours and perform preventative maintenance, which provides a cost savings to the city and also is a tremendous safety effort as well. In recent years, the Fleet Services has lost over 25% of the mechanical staff. Despite the lack of funding, Fleet Services was recognized by the National Association of Administrators, awarded Fleet Services with the 2011 Fleet Sustainability Award for their efforts to provide and maintain an environmentally sustainable, heavy-duty truck fleet. Most notably, Fleet Services was ranked ninth in the nation out of 38,000 eligible public agencies for excellence in innovative business practices and performance by the 100 best fleets. And with us today, on behalf of the department, is Tony Royster, the General Manager, also Angela Sherrick-Bright, Assistant General Manager, Alvin Blaine, retired General Manager, and also Richard Carlson, Fleet Director, and all of the fleet workers who are here present today. And there should be about 25 of you here. Wave your hand, say hello. So one of the things that I'd like to point out, we have various departments, including Fleet Services, that are not only recognized formally, but when they are in other parts of the country, or they're giving advice to people even around the world, they are respected and appreciated, and people know who LA Fleet Services is because they are very generous with their advice, they're very generous with offering other departments throughout the country and throughout the world with advice on how they can be efficient, how they can increase safety, and how they can do it above and beyond the call of duty. And that's one of the reasons why we're honoring them today, is because they do embody what makes this country great: hard work, dedication, and going above and beyond the call of duty. And with that, I'd like to ask the General Manager, Tony Royster, to say a few words. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to congratulate the Fleet Services Division for this outstanding achievement. It's unbelievable that you can be ranked out of 38,000 as number nine, and we're always seeking to be number one. Also, I'd like to thank the men and women of this division, also to thank the council members and the mayor for their support, and also to thank Local 721 for their continued support to Department of General Services. And it's always a wonder, I mean, wonderful for us to support you, to support the council, support the city of Los Angeles, but without these people, the city of Los Angeles cannot operate, because like the council member was saying, we maintain helicopters, tracks, trucks, the sweepers and everything, and due to the cuts, these guys are still doing a great job, and considering the circumstances, they've done a great job, and we really appreciate what they've done. Thank you very much for your support. Mr. President, I'd also like to point out that I think it's very important for us to recognize all of our professionals in the city of Los Angeles. It's unfortunate that a lot of times, people see somebody in a suit and tie and say, "That's a professional," but with all due respect, when you look at all these men and women behind me, they might not be wearing a suit or tie, but they are professionals. I just want to share with you something that my brother, who's an engineer now, shared with us when we did the naming of a school after my mother and father, and he shared a story with everybody where he was working with my father. My father only had a first-grade education, and my father had a pick and a shovel in his hands, and he said, "Son, this is my pen and my pencil." He says, "If this is what you want to do, you can do this, but you can also do other things as well." While my brother became an engineer, and he no longer carried a shovel and a pick like my father, he carried the pen and the pencil, and he did that for over 35 years as an engineer. I just want to say that I am very, very proud of the professionals that stand here and serve our city. You don't have to go to college to be a professional. But when you bring the best that you have with you every single day, when you go above and beyond the call of duty, you are a professional, and that's what we're honoring today, the professionals of the city of Los Angeles in the Department of General Services. We have Bob Schoonover, the representative, to say a few words.
You know, it's been my pleasure to work with a lot of these guys through the years, but I want to say something. If you think about all the obstacles that have been thrown in their way in the last four years, they lost people to E-RIP, they lost people to DWP, they lost time due to furloughs, every obstacle was thrown in their way. But it's a tribute to these people here, these mechanics and welders and support staff, that they found a way to keep the availability of this fleet going that supports 80% of the city. These guys are pros, and we're all proud of them.
Thank you very much, Bob, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that said, there are a few members around this horseshoe, Mr. Cardenas, that would like to weigh in on this, starting with Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for doing this. You're on a roll. I know that Mr. Cardenas is not gonna be with us soon, he's gonna be representing us in Washington, but he's gonna be fighting hard for working men and working women there in DC and doing a great job, and thank you for making this presentation. When people ask about where the middle class is in this city anymore, where's it gone to? It's right here before us. It's folks who roll up their sleeves, actually take a hard day's work, sweating through all the hardship that Bob mentioned, the toughest years when you stepped up and became part of the solution for over 11,000 vehicles of every sort, whether it's hybrids, electric vehicles, natural gas vehicles, whatever the changes are, you've adapted and become one of the most nimble workforces anywhere in this city and probably in this country as well. And I want to thank you on behalf of the men and women who are served by those vehicles that you get out there on the road, that clean our streets, that pick up our trash, that clean our air when we change what kind of vehicles they are, and you do it with such grace, and you do it in tougher times than they've ever done, and we never get the chance to thank you face to face. And so all of us around this horseshoe are indebted to you, but bigger than that, there's 4 million people in the city of Los Angeles that are saying thank you to you as well. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Alarcon?
Yeah, I want to stand up and thank these people for keeping my car running after 108,000 miles. I'm not planning on getting a new one until I'm out of here, but, you know, that car runs as good today as it did the first day I drove it. It's a hybrid vehicle, you had to learn on it a little bit, but it is in good shape. You know, when we go through the budget process, I have told my colleagues that we need to consider, we need to save the revenue generating positions, and sometimes there's positions like traffic officers, and you know they're revenue generating, but what they don't recognize is that the support services provide the opportunities for them to be revenue generating. If we cut you, we're cutting opportunities to generate revenue, and sometimes that's lost, and we need to regroup and understand that, not to mention all the complaints we get from the community for the services that have to be provided by vehicles that you service, whether it be in sanitation, bulky item pickup, abandoned vehicle, you guys are there, even if you're not there physically, you are there in terms of the work that you have performed on the vehicle that is picking up. You know, there's a couple of guys that do one of the worst jobs at the city of Los Angeles, and that's dead animal pickup, and those vehicles are spotless. I know those guys take particular pride in driving those vehicles, having the most difficult task, in fact, I'm hoping to bring them in to honor them, but those vehicles have to be available to do some things that people take for granted. You know, picking up dead animals from the street is not a glamorous job, somebody's gotta do it. If you didn't do it, can you imagine the phone calls we would get? Well, it's that kind of pride that you bring to the job, to keep our force going, to keep our ability to provide services going, but frankly, I think that you also are contributing to the city in terms of the revenue that is generated because of the vehicles that you keep going in our city. So I want to thank you for putting up with these tough times, and, you know, I know that you've made a career out of public service. When I look at the faces out here, I remember working for Mayor Bradley and how proud he was that he created a diversified workforce that could enter into the middle class, not just get a job, but enter into the middle class and return those dollars back to our city in terms of consumer purchasing power, and if we undercut public employees, we are undercutting our own economy, it doesn't make any sense. So I want to thank you for your service, thank you for taking care of that hybrid vehicle that I drive for 108,000 miles, and thank you for all the service you provide to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Englander?
I wanted to say that what you do is an art. You know, I grew up, I used to change my own oil in my car, and I loved doing that. When I went to high school, LAUSD actually offered wood shop, metal shop, auto shop, and we used to learn how to work with tools, and our kids don't have that anymore. I'm not sure what we're gonna do, quite frankly, to replace you guys in the future. I'm not sure what we're gonna do, because we don't teach those in public schools, the crafts, the trades, the art that you perform every single day, and it's becoming more and more... and more complicated. And, you know, Mr. Alacon mentioned his car has 108,000 miles and it's a hybrid. These cars are more complicated to work on today than ever before, they're all electronic, and you guys have been able to keep up with that technology, but we're no longer training to that. And as you've stated earlier, we're losing many of you because of attrition and retirement and other departments like DWP, and that's criminal, quite frankly. And so I want to say thank you, not only for the hard work that you perform, you're all artists, I've seen you at work, from the carpentry to the upholstery shops, to working on the vehicles and keeping them maintained. When was the last time you drove in the city of Los Angeles and you saw a city vehicle broken down on the side of the road? It doesn't happen, because you guys are there maintaining them, and if it does, you're there 24 hours a day to pick it up. And so I want to say thank you, God bless you, for the artistry you bring to the trade, to the job, to the city family, for all of your years of dedication, and for the dedication that you've brought to all the Angelinos, as was mentioned as well, and for Tony Cardenas for bringing them forward. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been with the city for now over 40 years, and I know what the mechanics do. Mr. Alacon, I have 165,000 miles on my city car. A car that is no longer manufactured, it's a Mercury Mountaineer, they don't even make the car anymore, Mercury went out of business, so it's really an antique, and it still runs. It's down in the garage, down in the parking lot, it still runs. So commendations to what you've done. Bob, I know that you've been at the table, the negotiations have taken place, I know the sacrifices that you folks have made, still paying the bills, still keeping the fleet running, still taking care of your families, and it's a tribute to what you do. And oftentimes, you come to work, you wonder, "Does anybody care? Does anybody care what you're doing to get that car rolling?" The diesel mechanics, the helicopter mechanic, all those folks that work with what you do to keep this fleet rolling. And it rolls, and we're not purchasing new equipment. So what we have is an aging fleet, but we've got professionals that keep it moving forward for the people of Los Angeles. So if you wonder, "Does anybody care?", today, Mr. Cardenas bring you forward, and all the council members showing our respect, admiration for what you do every single day. But it's for the people of Los Angeles that we're working for, and that's exactly what you're doing, because if we don't have that equipment, our personnel can't deliver the service. So whatever you're working on, you're delivering for the people of this great city. And Bob, again, congratulations, because I know those talks have been difficult. I come from the Police Protection League, where I was at the table in negotiations, and as the budget gets tighter and tighter and tighter, more and more sacrifices, fewer people hired, more demand, older cars breaking down, older equipment breaking down, and you folks keep it working. So congratulations, due respect for you for what you do every single day for the great people of Los Angeles. And Tony, Congressman Tony Cardenas, I like to say that because it has a ring to it, but what you're doing is acknowledging folks that really did be recognized for what they do that oftentimes people don't pay attention to. So thank you all, do a great job, keep up the good work.
Bill Rosendahl.
I've been standing up the whole time, because honoring people is why I'm standing up. Where the rubber hits the road, it's you guys who hit the road. You're the ones that make our vehicles work, you're the ones that keep the city fleet together. We are in tough times, and frankly, I support the union and keeping the union here and keeping this this way, rather than any privatization concepts that people might have. My older brother Frankie, he was into mechanics. I learned a little bit, but he was working at Ford where they were making cars, but I just didn't have, you know, I'm a baby Uyghur, I'm kind of awkward, so I had a hard time doing it. But now that I've been in the government, and constantly we're driving around, or the helicopters coming down in the situation, you guys know what you're doing, as Tony said, the true professionals. It isn't about a suit and tie, could hang me on that one. You know, it's about the kind of work you do, it's the kind of professionalism that you bring to the plate. So great, 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 and thank you very much for everything. Bless you.
Tom Labonge.
Thank you very much, a lot of great things have been said. I want to thank Mark Barrera right there. Mark, stand up, he's the guy who does our help there. Thank you, Mark, he's one from General Services. I also want to thank what Mitch Englander said, and follow up to what Tony said. I went to Marshall High. I finished high school in two and a half years, Dennis Zine, not because I took great classes, I got As in print shop, and was the outstanding printer for the school, I got As in athletics. And then I tried to get a job in printing, and then I still wanted to play football, but that's another story. But you are special, and what we hear is someone in your life also taught you that skill, and you hung in there, and then you got a great opportunity with the city of Los Angeles. So I'm proud of each and every one of you, I'm proud of the seal on every one of our cars and trucks, and I'm also proud of any of you if you do get to DWP, because I was there once, and it's not a bad place. So when you said you get lost to DWP, that's a great place too. You're smiling, I know you know why you're smiling. Anyway, I'm proud of each of you to keep the fleet rolling, safety is so important, and my mile is 106, 108,000 miles, but it's a car from the motor pool, Dennis, not a special Mercury, or whatever you got. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you. And thank your quarterback, Tony Royster, who came up the ladder of General Services, who's always, he always fights for you at this table.
Mr. Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. You know, my dad is a janitor, and he worked that role for 30 years. And I saw how hard he would work in the mornings, coming late, swollen hands, tired feet, because he was running back and forth, and he was the guy that had to take care of it because the boss had to look good. As a teenager, I worked at Doris Place in the maintenance yard, Bureau of Sanitation, those summer programs. I did that for, I believe, four months. And we'd get in at 6:00 in the morning, try to be in our trucks out by 7:00, to beat the sun, go to the hardest job that day, because it would be very, very hot, 90 degrees, 100 degrees, in the alleyways, in the pathways that had to be cleaned up. And when our trucks broke down, guess where they went? They went to you guys. When we had mechanical issues, we had to wait and work with you. And I'm seeing this as a 16-year-old, 17-year-old. So that's never left my mind in terms of who does the real work in the city. And I don't say this just to aggrandise you, I say it because I saw it every day throughout the week, even on weekends, we had special calls. Some of the guys would say, "You know, I got to do it because they need it." And they put their own time, set aside, and made those sacrifices, but no one ever acknowledged you for that. So I'm going to thank Councilman Cardenas, Mr. Royster, for having this moment that you deserve, because Lord knows how hard you worked throughout the week, there's a lot of pressures, he has a lot of politics, but when it all comes down to what's real, it's you. So for that, I thank you very much, and I wish you good luck. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much for your hard work. There's nothing like putting in a hard day's work, knowing that you did a job and did it well, and not only to do it for the public, but also to do it in making sure we're providing for our families at home. So thank you for your hard work, we are a city family, and it's great, Mr. Cardenas, that you're bringing our hard-working family into these chambers, that we acknowledge their hard work. Thank you so much.
And I too want to congratulate each and every one of you, thank you for all that you do for us, you make us look good. And Mr. Cardenas, I'm really into recognizing the unsung heroes in city service, so this was a great idea. Guys, thank you, thank you so very much, and congratulations, you deserve it. Just give them a round of applause, everyone. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, and with that, I give the professionals, the Department of General Services, Fleet Services, this honor on behalf of every elected official in the city of Los Angeles, assigned it in honor of your hard and dedicated work, and the true professionals with a wrench and a screwdriver, and perhaps some diagnostic equipment right there too. Congratulations for all the wonderful work you do, and we really appreciate you.
Mr. Clerk, where are we at on today's agenda?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, if I could call Mr. Zumadog, Bill Hui, and Matt Dowd, please. Sergeants, can you, Sergeant Johnson, can you let them? Mr. Zumadog is first.
Yes, good morning, City Council and the fine constituents watching on TV 35. My name's Zumadog, L.A. candidate, along with Eric Garcetti, for mayor in the 2013 election. And you can read more at zumadog.com and watch video from yesterday's council meeting. Oh my gosh, Zumadog and Matt Dowd getting under council skin. Okay, and I'd like to say something. Puffy pumpkin head popping up like a pop tart, Paul Carets, please do not pop up like a puffy pumpkin-headed pop tart and violate the Brown Act by saying in 50 words or more. When I say something, he's got to pop up like a puffy pumpkin-headed pop tart and pop off at the mouth and say, "Dah dah 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 dah." Now, I did not have a chance to respond to the puffy pumpkin-headed pop tart, that's a violation. Also, every time that the city council guy up here tells me to turn the mic down and to do this and that, that's going to cost about $10,000. Stop violating the Brown Act. Me and Matt come here, we want to speak. Now let's talk about Dennis Zine. He had the audacity to address the union workers that were here to say about me, "Yeah, sometimes people come here and they abuse it." Talk about abuse! The FBI is investigating this city hall, and Dennis Zine voted yes on everything that's being investigated. When Dennis Zine was a traffic cop, I heard that his partner used to have to pull him off people, he was beating them so badly, boom, 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 there weren't cameras, the guy goes, "Come on, Dennis, that's enough." So that's who you're dealing with, with Dennis Zine, and he says, "I abuse." I heard that his, "Ay, ay, ay, let's not get into details that the kingpin knows and can drop on anybody at any time." So just remember your city controller, when he was LAPD, he used to beef people so bad when the cameras weren't on, that his partner had to call him off, and he says, "I abuse public comments." After this guy just pilfered and stole every, the money, the city's going bankrupt because he's a dumb moron he doesn't, nobody's voting on.
All right, you're done. Okay, Mr. Bill Hui? Yes, Mr. Krikorian?
The council as a whole, not the individual council members, and I just...
Wait a minute, Mr. Dog, you're disrupting this meeting.
Mr. President, I just also want to remind members of the public that this microphone is available to anyone who wishes to come and speak. They can say anything that they'd like, whether it's true or false, and it's not the appropriate role of the council to respond to every speaker. But it is important to remind the public, I think, that the fact that someone comes to this microphone and feels that they want to take their two minutes in front of the television cameras to say whatever they'd like, does not mean that anything whatsoever that they say is true or has any validity whatsoever, and I think that it's appropriate that that be said.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Zine, before we get to you, Mr. Hui.
I would just like to state that the comments made were absolutely a lie, a bold-faced lie, and this individual is notorious for scandalous lying statements at city council.
Mr. Hui.
Good morning, Council President Weston, members of the L.A. City Council. My name is Bill Hui, I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition, fairhousingcoalition.com. We believe in fairness under the law for landlords and renters. I have a client here, who, she represents a lender, they were the mortgage holder on an apartment building that fell into disrepair. So the owner fell behind in his payments and they foreclosed. But while the owner had the property, he got cited by LHD for numerous violations. So once the banker foreclosed, they came right in, fixed everything, and sold the building. But now, LHD is going after the banker, who was not the owner of the property when the property was cited. The property is in Council District 2, Mr. Krikorian's district. And I'm not coming here to pin it on you, but I just want to make the council aware, the LHD is notorious over there. I mean, here's a lender, she's the employee of the lender, and the lender did nothing but follow the law. The person stopped paying the mortgage, they foreclosed, and as soon as they got possession and they were amazed at how bad the building was, they brought in contractors, fixed the building, brought it up to code, and sold it. They did the right thing. Yet LHD wants $5,000 in fines and penalties, and that's really wrong. I mean, this person did nothing wrong, and if Mr. Krikorian will let me talk to him, I'd appreciate that, but I'm just making a swear to the council, LHD is like, they're out of their minds in some ways, I mean, they're in another planet, and I'm trying to say it respectfully, but they're really unethical over there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Matt Dowd.
All right, thank you, Channel 35, hope you're listening, Matt Dowd, after that display. It's all, see, I gave it to the city attorney yesterday, and this case law from the Supreme Court, even in a limited public forum like Deion says this is, the First Amendment tightly constrains the government's power. And they just say a disruption is an actual disruption, not while you're having your public comment, and listeners' reaction to speeches is not a content-neutral basis, which means that the city council person who jumps up like a pop tart can be held accountable for damages. And that's Tom Labonge a hundred times, the dummy, dumbest councilman.
No, come on, Matthew.
On the block, no, this is, and you'll be named too.
I don't care.
I just read you the case law, do not interrupt my public comment. You know, remember back to Cleveland when you were a kid? Did you give in? You know what I'm talking about, when you were discriminated against and picked on? And now I got a ticket from your LAPD monkeys on the beach who don't know anything, they spelt my four-letter name wrong, D-O-W-N, the dummy Calhoun under Sergeant Gonzalez, it's a four-letter name out of my ID, that's like spelling parks wrong. The chief, former chief of police. This is what the city's turned into, Herb Weston. I'm playing guitar on the beach, I came to your council committee, and I told you I'm in favor of the law, if you do it right, you get rid of all those vendors, but then you cops, and I said, "But don't put in these dumb things." And all you cared about is, see, the public comment doesn't even matter, a shiver, because you had that guy there talking, you go, "Oh, look about, what about your hat? It's all warm and fuzzy, it doesn't matter, that's why they have a First Amendment, so you don't have warm and fuzzy."
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, next we have Dr. Tom Williams, Michael Caddion, and Arminak Norrigenian. Please come forward.
Dr. Tom Williams, I have two subjects for the day. First one is Friends of Southwest Museum. The Southwest Museum, what was that, anyway? It's a big building over in Highland Park, but it's also a center of pride for American native tribes. It's also good for... It's also good for the pride of Northeast LA, Highland Park. It's a symbol, it's a very nice symbol, except it's been closed for how long? Why? Autry National Center. We've tried and tried and tried, and we were told a few months ago, months, maybe half a year, that there would be a special committee formed, and that that special committee would try to bring Autry National Center and the people of the Highland Park, Northeast LA, to the table. But we haven't seen a table, we haven't seen a committee formed, we haven't seen much of anything except for a closed building. Closed building with all of the collection hopefully still in it. We're trying to deal with it. We're developing a business plan, not only for the building, but also for the area. We're also trying to develop a new plan for the Southwest Museum, because one was founded that would work as a fully functioning museum. But we don't know, because the city council representatives who said there would be a committee have not seen necessary to form that committee. But we get kind of used to it, we still remind our children of what Southwest Museum was. Our children. How about 15 seconds, 10 seconds, maybe five seconds of honoring the children of Toulouse, France, of Florida, of those in Hama, Holmes, and Aleppo?
Thank you, doctor. Next? Michael? No, Michael, you're next.
Here we are again. We went to this dog and pony show with Mr. Weezer's office, and I'm here to tell you it didn't work. I sat with him in his office and I explained to him about his staff not calling me back. He sat there with Eric Martel and explained to him to please return Mr. Carrion's calls. A week ago today, I spoke to Mr. Martel about an issue, he said he was gonna look into it, call me back that day or the next day. Still waiting for a call. Brought this to Mr. Weezer's attention. Mr. Weezer said he'll call me back yesterday, about 12 o'clock, once he talks to Eric. He didn't call back. I called his office about 4:30. He was in a meeting, but he'd call me back later on. Still waiting for his call. Now I'm sick and tired of it. Okay? If you're not gonna call back, you're not a man of your word, you're a liar. Okay? Mr. Krikorian wants to stand here and tell people what they say up here may or may not be true, what comes out of his mouth may or not be true. Okay? Because you guys are liars too. So when you're gonna call other people liars, at least be like your father was, a man of his word. Don't stand there and tell people you're gonna do something and don't do it, and then wait till they come to city hall, come all the way downtown to come here to speak, to try to cut them off and say, "Oh, now I'm gonna make time for you." Let me tell you the difference between failure and success, Mr. Weezer.
Mr. President, the speaker should direct his comments to the council.
What's that?
And hold his time. Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Speaker should direct his comments to the council. He could talk about the actions of council members, but he should direct his comments to the council.
Okay. Maybe the city council can tell Mr. Weezer to be a man of his word. Okay? Maybe the city council can explain to Mr. Weezer, the difference between failure and success is a person who fails never has time, and a person who succeeds makes time. One more thing, this BS that happened in Alserino will not happen on North Broadway or on Bring Back Broadway, because they get all the money.
Thank you, Michael. I think I do owe you about five seconds. Go on, give him, go on.
That in Alserino, we get screwed royally, but Bring Back Broadway gets all the money, and I'm tired of it.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's unfortunate, as my colleagues and the public who watches these shows, the meeting regularly know, that Mr. Carrion is here practically every week, and yes, and he prefers to have these conversations in a public format, because in fact, we did speak yesterday morning, I saw him in council, we updated him on the progress. I think Mr. Carrion would rather just have these debates here in public. Again, Mr. Carrion, as I've told you every time, you call me a liar, I'm here, I'm available, we could speak, I don't know why you prefer to have these debates back and forth in public. Thank you.
Okay, let's, don't disrupt a meeting. Mr. Norrigenian? Mr. Norrigenian?
Good morning, respectable city council members, good morning, Phil Angelinos. I am Arminak Norrigen, I'm a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate. As a Democrat, I have the honor to run for the seat of California State Assembly for this year presidential primaries on June 5th. Vote for me, progressive Democrat, most progressive candidates of all, and I will definitely bring a great score of jobs, you know, to Los Angeles area by enforcing social justice, by raising taxes against wealth individuals and oil-producing and gasoline-selling corporations, 50%, much more than Governor Brown offers in his public referendum, who has only 3% tax increase against wealth individuals. I offer 50% tax increase against wealth individuals in order to enforce social justice, in order to replenish state coffers, in order to create new jobs by government contracts. It is a very viable solution for California, and actually, we unemployment about 11.3%. California needs more jobs. I also propose to create California satellite cell phone service for rural and forested areas, territorial waters of California shores. I will create state legislation control to disperse car jams, we will actually live satellite surveillance, and also, I propose to make same-sex marriage law of land, and propose to give six months free pregnancy leave to all California women at the expense of the state. And also, as a part of my campaign against wasteful spending, narco-mafia, and organized crime, I actually asked city council members to cancel notorious and illegal city ordinance 181-530, which violates United States Customs and Transit Act and makes distribution of harmful narcotic marijuana in the city of Los Angeles legal. Actually, 56% of California will vote for me, because they did reject Proposition 19 last year, with a relative majority of Californians. And with the relative majority of Californians is still intact and will vote for those progressive candidates, who will actually repeal so-called medical marijuana dispensaries.
Thank you, thank you very much. Alcohol, Henry Marine, Arnold Sachs, and then after that, Rick Nightingale in the Valley, you'll be the cleanup hitter.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. Last Friday, Councilman Parks and Councilman Perry and those that came here to support, suffered the same fate that the Southwest Museum supporters suffered last June. You, along with the rest of this council, with the exception of Councilman Reyes and Weezer, gave a yes vote in favor of the Autry Museum and against my community, taking away an icon of immense economic value and a source of pride. Just like you, we were asking for this council to do the right thing, and both of you knowingly with no support, did not support our community. Knowingly, with the rest of the council and members, you voted in favor of the Autry Museum, who is stealing the Southwest Museum collection. You aided the Autry Museum to get away with robbery. My community, just like yours, has suffered through backroom deals with commissioners that are there to ignore the rules of the Brown Act when convenient to the Autry. We had to see through manipulated meetings that controlled the results in favor of the Autry Museum and ignored the wishes of the community. We had to deal with high-powered, expensive lawyers of Leitham and Watkins that Mrs. Jackie Autry, with her wealth of around $300 million, can afford. Why the rush of giving her $6 million? She is a millionaire. The changes in restrictions have not only have benefited Councilman Weezer both ways, by getting Broadway and by washing his hands from the Southwest Museum. He never had-
Thank you.
-he never kept his word.
Thank you. Henry? And you'll be followed by Mr. Arnold Sachs.
This is UA Journal, this is my Bible, that's Obama, and he tells you how to recirculate money, and that you don't mess with Davis Bacon funds and use them at will, and you always know what my subject is, I always got the same menu, money employees never use, as shown in Hackman Cola MOUs. And I want to thank Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Krikorian for letting you know that the money is used for construction workers in public housing and city buildings is subject to prevailing wage entrust laws. And the monies that you have diverted for the last 22 years from public employee pension and benefit plans has got to be rolled over. It says underneath this new Recovery, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, they will put more investigators to investigate Davis Bacon violations and all these IRS violations. It's not the mafia, anybody who managed to subvert taxes like Al Capone has got to deal with it one day. So there ain't no, nobody's getting killed around here. Incompetence and corruption creates the same results. So, Mr. Garcetti wouldn't do it, and Mr. Weston will be our next mayor anytime our mayor leaves town, so he can keep the position in 2013. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Arnold Sachs, followed by Rick Nightingale.
Yes, thank you, good morning, Arnold Sachs. You know, all this discussion about who's lying and who's not a liar, and the city council setting standards about what lying is and what lying isn't. Time to pay up Tutanich, from the LA Times, March 7th. I was trying to help find, LA City Attorney Newt Tutanich, keep a campaign promise, when I went looking for an airplane that would fly around downtown with a sign reading, "Newt is a liar." He said he wasn't gonna run for office until he finished his term. That makes him a liar. I wonder, so how does the council feel on that? Or maybe about this $10,000, $100,000 that he vowed to give an after-school program if he ran for office before he finished his term? That's lying! So how does Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Zine feel about that? Are those lies, will they stand up and say, "Newt, you're a liar"? Just like the people on this side of the mic are liars all the time. That being said, I really appreciate the fact of getting a chance to speak on, oh, thank you for the advice, Mr. City Attorney, you gave to one of the speakers. You giving advice is like the guy from Penn State giving showering lessons. The city attorney, and I'd like to thank you for giving the opportunity to speak on the convention center there yesterday, Mr. Rosendahl. I'd really like to know about the speaker, the guy who got put in this post, how he feels about this item, this was in the Daily Breeze from August 26, 2011. Stadium bid sacks convention. Conventions are being canceled because of the stadium that isn't gonna be built, because of construction constraints put on the arena. So what are they gonna do now that the NFL has decided not to put a team in? How many conventions are gonna be canceled while they're on hold waiting for this stadium to be built? And the fact that the guy came from Denver? Isn't that where AEG is?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Sachs. Mr. Nightingale in the Valley.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. You know, this is about 17, too, about racist and hate, and what is a hate crime, really? Before, how many kids say, "Oh, God, I hate you, I wish you were dead"? Now, you better watch out what you're doing, or if a kid does it, you're gonna be ending up in court with the parents paying the lawyer's fees. I mean, look at what, on TV, the only, like all the comedians, the only ones that turn around are halfway decent, that never use any of this stuff, excuse me, it is very minute. I cannot believe that people put up with it. That, the only one is Jay Leno and Greg, somebody on Channel 2, I believe, they're the only ones that don't use the foul language, basically, and the hate, like with Palin and so forth in their kid. That was outrageous. But then you turn around and let's go to the gay and lesbian thing. Like I told you, I had a cousin that was gay, she came to our house, got all engraved. My wife's beautician was gay, I went to, I knew what it was, a gay party. They were great, they loved the party, man, I had a lot of fun, I knew what I was going to. But then you turn around and had this kid in Oxtard, and he was putting the make on another guy, and God forbid that kid got killed. But hey, why, the guy should have put some whoopee on him. But no, you can't do that. But that's just like, remember Crocodile Dundee's movie? Where he's in the bar, and this cross dresser puts the make on him? Now you tell me if you're, somebody did that, you pick somebody up, and they didn't tell you what they were, that you don't think they should not get a little bit of whoopee on them? Give me a break. Now is that hate? I don't think so. Somebody took advantage of you? Now you tell me what is hate? You make hate about everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk, that's the last public comment card. Okay, let's be quiet. Why don't we go to item one, I think?
Very good, sir, item one called Special for Cards.
Okay, item one is called Special for Cards. That's Dr. Williams and Michael Carrion.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, about 40 years in public service of brush clearance and weed abatement, something like that, because what do we have? We have the LA Fire Department, we have the LA Department of Public Works, Street Services, and we have Building and Safety, all involved in getting lots cleaned. Sometimes they're vacant lots, sometimes they're not vacant lots, and sometimes they're in the process of becoming occupied lots. We have the same problem, and three different agencies don't seem to be coordinating, they have different times, different dates, different requirements. Can't we get this into one department? Flip a coin, three times, see who comes out best, and consolidate them so that they can be enforced properly, and so that we can get some standard of performance for whoever is chosen to do it. And also, one bill that goes to everybody so that people can figure out who they're having to pay the 13, 23, or more dollars for the inspection and for the enforcement. So, in order to save money, hey, consolidate these three departments for the activity of brush clearance, weed abatement, and other materials both in, on, and around each individual property. And by the way, this one says "on" the property, so that means anywhere on a particular property. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Michael Carrion.
You're talking about weed abatement. I still have a problem with this, because you speak about weed abatement, but yet, properties that are owned by the city in CD 14 are never cleaned. They look like garbage. When you call your councilman's office, they don't do anything about it, they just ignore it. It goes away. So weed abatement? I've got a gardener that comes and cleans my yard, yet I still get a letter telling me that if I don't call back, then they're gonna come and somebody's gonna charge me for assessing my property. My lawn is manicured, it's done properly, I don't even get out there and do it. Yet, you're gonna send letters out telling people that if you don't abide by this or write back, then we're gonna send somebody out. You got hillsides in the CD 14 that burn every year. Come to find out, the city owns part of that hillside. That's why it doesn't get cleaned. They allow it to burn and allow our fire department to get in- They allow it to burn and allow our fire department to get in there in a hazardous situation that may cause life or injury. But once again, my councilman doesn't care. He's too busy lining everybody at City Council to allow this thing to continue over and over where firemen are put at risk to allow this property to burn. And because it's owned by the city, he won't man up to it. Sorry to use the word "man" in this subject. But when somebody's a liar and they sit here and tell you that they're here representing you, it's kind of hard for you to sit that they're going to represent weed abatement. You drive up Soto, up Huntington Drive, the weeds are growing four feet tall. Mr. Weiser and his staff drive by it.
Come on, Michael.
The weeds are there, and they don't clean them. It's your property. You clean them before you want to tell other people it's theirs.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Okay, we have no cards, no one in the queue on this item. If we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, Mr. President, that brings us to item 14 called "Special for Cards."
Well, you know what I was going to do, depending on what Mr. Zine and Ms. Perry wanted to do? We could take, go out of order and take item 17? Okay, so we'll do that. And we do have cards on the subject. But Ms. Perry, I'll let you start it off.
Is that what you want me to do? Okay, all right. I'd like to take public comment first, then. Mr. Chair, if we could ask your indulgence, there are some members of some media advocacy groups who are here. If you could start by allowing them to sit at the center table and do their presentation as one group. I believe it's Jasmine Koenig, Kevin Ross. And then I'll ask Jasmine to introduce everyone else she's brought with her. Can we do that? If you could have Ms. Koenig come to the table and just state who she has here with her today? Maybe the additional people can sit in the front row and trade out seats or something like that.
Good morning. Good morning, Councilmember Perry, Council President Wesson, Councilmember Parks, and the rest of the City Council. With me, I have members from the National Hispanic Media Coalition, the Los Angeles Urban League, the Black Media Alliance, the Korean American Bar Association, All Saints Church. And that's who's with us.
Okay, so why don't you give us a quick summation and try not to, normally, we would give people two minutes each so that if you could.
I'll be quick. Yeah, thank you. So, good morning. My name is Jasmine Koenig. I'm a member of the Black Media Alliance. First, I want to start off by thanking Councilmembers Perry, Wesson, and Parks for taking up this issue. The reason why we're here today is because recently in the news, there's been a lot of talk throughout the country around the anti-women rhetoric, the racism, the sexism, the misogynistic language that we've been hearing on the radio. Well, a lot of that has been going on here in Los Angeles, in particular, recently when Whitney Houston passed away and John and Ken of KFI's John and Ken Show referenced her as being basically a prostitute who was on drugs. After meeting with KFI's management team over there, a lot of us felt like they didn't really take our concerns very seriously, especially when the week after, one of their top hosts referred to women as being dumb As. So we're here today, basically, to ask for the City Council to exercise their free speech and let not only America know, but the world, know that in the most diverse city, one of the most diverse cities in the world, that that kind of language is not really acceptable, and there's no place for it in public discourse. I am a listener of KFI. I love KFI. You know, I don't think they take into consideration that not all of their listeners are Caucasian males. I'm an African-American female who works in politics, who has listened to KFI for years. They need to stick to what they do well, which is politics, and leave the race-baiting alone. You know, referring to African-American women as being fat, black, and lazy is unacceptable on the air here in Los Angeles. And so we're just asking for your support on that. We're not trying to stifle anyone's speech, but we do want the council to exercise their own free speech as well as to send a message that, you know, this is a diverse city. And, you know, let's, let's take race issues out of it. Let's try to move forward as a city and not be so polarizing as it relates to some of the political issues here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead, Captain Alex? Go ahead, Alex.
Please. Good morning, everyone. I'm Alex Nogales, President and CEO of the National Hispanic Media Coalition. Our main agenda item is hate speech and its relationship to hate crimes. Hate crimes across the country are way up. In the state of California, 2010, hate crimes against Latinos went up by 47%. In our nation's capital, Washington, DC, it went up by 40%. This is not an accident. It is because we have 800 stations across the nation, talk show stations across the nations that are very, very conservative in nature and have taken the immigration issue four years ago and bundled it to the point to where, after a while, you don't know what they're talking about. But I'll tell you one thing, Latinos are to be blamed for everything that's wrong with America, and that's just the way it is right now. Here locally, we have one station in particular, and that is KFI. They have offended, they have maligned, they have lied about every community available in the area. Now, you all know that Latinos and other people of color are the majority in this area, and yet, we're tolerating these folks who are doing this kind of broadcasting day in and day out. Now, it's ugly, it's violent, and they're inciting others to violence. The latest incident that we took, that we decided enough is enough, came about when, in fact, the Dream Act was passed, and John and Ken decided to go up against one of the immigration organizations here in town. And what they did is they gave out the phone number for the media director for an organization here. They told their listeners to go ahead and call him and give him a piss of their mind. Within a four-day period of time, he had over 500 calls to his personal email or personal cellphone. A lot of them were threatening. "We're going to get you. We're going to do this to you. We're going to do that to you." And they, they loved it. They loved that they were doing that type of thing. For us, it was crossing the line. It was like too much. Now, we have passed resolutions in the State Senate. We passed resolutions in the Assembly and with the Board of Supervisors in San Francisco. So I think Los Angeles needs to stand up and say, "This is not acceptable." Because the more we let it go, the worse it becomes. And then those people that are prone to violence anymore anyway, they are incited to go, to go and, and do violent things to people that have nothing to do with anything. So we urge you to, in fact, vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jane Oak. I'm President of the Korean American Bar Association. Just in January of this year, there were racist comments about Korean painter scam guys on the John and Ken Show. And the Korean American Bar Association wrote a letter to KFI, joined by 20 other organizations, demanding an apology. And we later protested in front of the KFI building with no response at all. And there was actually an incident in December on the handle, on the law program as well, that had very horrible comments about the Korean American community. We are standing alongside the Black Media Alliance, the National Hispanic Media Coalition, CHIRLA, APAC, KRC, a lot of organizations that have been at the press conferences on this matter. And we urge you to please pass this resolution because we need to put an end to this hate speech. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Kevin Ross. I am a media host. I do the show "America's Court" with Judge Ross. It's a nationally syndicated court show. But I got my start in radio. And I had an opportunity for a brief period of time to actually be an on-air host at Clear Channel's KFI station. And what I will tell you is that that experience for me is part of the reason that I was able to then segue into television. So my perspective is more so an economic one. Local radio stations generate over a billion dollars in advertising revenue. And that's according to the Los Angeles County Economic Development Coalition. In 2008, they came out with that information. And what we're seeing on these airwaves, and it's not just Clear Channel, but right now, on KFI, they have 15 hosts. And of those 15 hosts, only one is a woman. She was just hired a few months ago. She has a weekend show. 13 of those 15 hosts are Caucasian males. Clear Channel sets the standard, not only here in Los Angeles, but all over the country. KFI is their flagship station. They have some 850 stations. And what that's telling me is African-Americans, Asians, Native Americans, for people of color are not getting access to those jobs. When you look at a station like KRLA, 870 AM, also in the talk format, every single host is a white male. And so what we're seeing is economic apartheid as it relates to Los Angeles, which is the number-two media market in the country. And these stations are setting the tone for what happens in other cities across the country. So what we're looking at is the LA City Council in exercising their free speech is sending a message, not only to Clear Channel and the stations here in Los Angeles, but across the country that we want to hear diversity of thought. Right now, we have this explosive situation going on with Trayvon Martin, the young man who was killed in Florida. There has been a lot of conversation about whether or not this case is going to go forward and so forth. Having been a former prosecutor and a Superior Court judge, I have my own perspective. But more so than that, I'm a father of two black boys. And my perspective, I guarantee you, would probably be different than Rush Limbaugh, who has no children. My perspective would probably be different from a John and Ken, John Cobalt particularly, who was my former colleague, who has boys. But me having African-American males and seeing the types of things I've seen as a prosecutor, it concerns me that that perspective is not being heard. So I just want to urge all of you to support the resolution. It is not a coincidence that you have three African-American City Council members. You've got a diverse group of individuals here, the Asian community, the Hispanic community, the African-American community. It's very difficult to get that sort of cohesiveness. And so if you're seeing that right now, what you're really seeing is this is a problem, not only for un-air talent, but there's no black producers, there's no black engineers, individuals who may work as a receptionist. They're listening to their un-air hosts speak misogynistically about women. Or if you're an African-American and you're a sales rep, you've got to go out and sell that station, although the un-air hosts are making disparaging remarks about African-Americans. So again, I just urge the council to adopt the resolution, and thank you so much for your time.
Good morning. I am Chris Strudwick, Attorney, and I am one of the Vice Presidents of the Los Angeles Urban League. On behalf of Blair Taylor and the league, I want to thank President Wesson, Councilmembers Parks and Perry for coming together to support this very, very important resolution. I'm going to just ditto everything that has been said, but I do want to emphasize that some of us met with the management of KFI when all this broke with John and Ken. And out of that meeting, there were some issues that were raised about what was happening specifically at KFI, and then again, at Clear Channel, as Kevin has stated. KFI has come out with what they are going to do to address some of these issues. And there were about four items that they, they came up with that they were going to do. I think this resolution, if passed by the council, will help them get to where we want them to get. To let them know that we understand, that they understand that they're problems. They're very serious problems with the station, with the race-baiting, with the, just the really disgraceful way they talk about women. And it's interesting to me that what we see on KFI and with these hosts is that when they talk about the political issues, they come at it in a very different way, which is great, which is why their ratings are so high. But when they start talking about people they don't know, and people who are different from them, and people who, who have a different lifestyle, they start talking about what we look like. They talk about how we're different and how we think different because we look different. And that is just not acceptable in Los Angeles. It's not acceptable in the country. And I ask you to send a very clear message that it's going to start here to put a stop to that. Thank you.
My name is Carissa Baldwin McGinnis. I'm the Director of Peace and Justice in a clergy on staff at All Saints Church in Pasadena. And would venture to say, members of our community live in every one of your districts, most likely. This resolution is really important to us. Clergy know what civic leaders know, and that is that hate is cheap and easy to come by anywhere you go. And what this resolution says is, we as a city are not going to put hate for sale in our media markets. We believe in the church, what many of these people have said, that any time a human being becomes a subject of bigotry and bigoted language, that human being is much more likely to also become the potential victim of violence. And we just have to move away from language that divides our community and move towards language that inspires us to become a race of people that sees itself as a human family. When a wife or a woman is battered, or a child is battered, you all and faith leaders are the ones that have to pick up those pieces and put them back together again. And so we would urge you to pass this resolution today and foster strength of community rather than division and violence. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dominique DePrima from radio station KJL H102.3 FM in Los Angeles. I want to thank Council President Herb Wesson and Councilmembers Bernard Parks and Jan Perry for bringing this resolution to you. And I want to thank the entire City Council for hearing us today and seriously considering this measure. I am a talk radio host. I do talk radio every morning. On any given day, I probably tick quite a few people off, and I understand how important freedom of speech is because I myself have been suspended. I won't tell you why. But, so we're not about censorship, and we're not about pulling people off the air, but we are about representation and standards, okay? I remember when Dr. Laura was fired. She said her First Amendment rights were abridged. And I said, "Yeah, well, any of us has a right to go to work naked, but if you do, you'll likely get fired." So what we're talking about here is not censorship, but corporate responsibility and being a good citizen of your community. Now, Clear Channel owns almost every radio station in this market. Because of changes in laws, we have media consolidation where you have very few companies that own lots of media outlets. And that impacts our democracy because they control what information and what perspective is available to who? Voters, okay? And I know this personally because I see what the difference we can make as a radio station. But when you have a corporation that does not create a representative environment, not only do you foster hate crime, you skew the conversation, you limit the information, and you can actually skew the democratic process. That's really what we're talking about. We're talking about responsibility. We're talking about community standards. We in Los Angeles are a leader in the entertainment business, in what we call content, right now, on the internet and everywhere. It's about what's being said and what's acceptable. We are leaders in this industry. And right now, there's a national movement. Women are rising up. Advertisers are dropping out of the Rush Limbaugh show. You know, and this is happening for a reason. People think this story's going to go away, and it doesn't go away because we have reached critical mass. And as women and as people of color, it's time for us to stand up and say, "This is what we find acceptable in our city, Los Angeles, in our greater Los Angeles, Southern California. This is what we find acceptable." We have three African-American City Councilmen, women and men. We have a Latino mayor. We have people from all over the world in this city, and we need to be represented. And that's why we say, instead of censoring people or firing people, we want to see representation in terms of hiring, and we want to see clear standards about what can and cannot be said on the air. And we urge you to stand up and make this clear for our city. Thank you very much for hearing us today, and we look forward to working with you. I'm so proud that we're able to stand together, so many of our organizations in different communities and come together and agree on this one. communities, and come together and agree on this one thing.
My name is John Ziegler. I was a full-time host at KFI for four years, following John and Ken. I had the pleasure of interviewing many of you and disagreeing with many of you on numerous occasions. And I come at this particular issue from a rather unique perspective. Not only did I work hand-in-hand with John and Ken on KFI, going on their show twice a day for about four years, but I'm also a free speech advocate, actually wrote a book about the issue. So I'm not somebody who is all about stifling free speech. In fact, I abhor that. But that is not what we're asking you to do today. What we're asking you to do today is to shine a light on a scourge on this community, which is what KFI has become. Unfortunately, what people do not understand about what KFI is, is that it is a business masquerading as a First Amendment factory of truth and justice and what's good for Southern California, what's good for the state. They use the public airwaves to engage in massive, massive fraud. If this was a regular business and they were advertising what they provide as their product based upon what they truly provide, I believe that they would be charged with a crime for perpetrating a fraud of commercialism. It is a business masquerading as a fraud. But it is worse than that, and I know that from my own personal experience. And let me tell you a story which combines both of these issues that are in front of you today. This issue of using, over the airwaves, the public airwaves to perpetrate a commercial fraud, as well as the issue of race, which is more specifically related to the resolution. On the fifth anniversary of 9/11, I went into the studio with John Cobalt to promote my show, which was coming on just after his. John had been ripping on the Iraq War that day, which was rather infuriating to me, because John had been a huge proponent of the Iraq War back when it was good for ratings, which John Cobalt and KFI are really all about. It's not about the truth, it's about what's good for ratings. It's basically glorified pro wrestling in a verbal form. So I asked John, I said, John, have you flipped your position on the Iraq War because it's good for ratings or because you truly believe it? And after screaming at me for a few seconds and falling silent, John looked me in the eye, which was very rare for John, because he usually looks down, and he said to me, no, John, actually, I do believe it, because trying to control Muslims is like trying to control black people. It will never happen. It's not in their makeup. I was shocked and horrified by this statement, and it made me realize that in one way, John Cobalt is not acting on the air. He is a racist. And I say this as somebody who has been called a racist without evidence and in a completely wrong context on many of occasions, and I abhor that charge when it is not based in fact. But I know John Cobalt, he is a racist, and what he does on the air is a horrible, horrible thing for this community, because he pretends to be about the truth, he pretends to be about justice, he is really all about ratings and revenue, and he will do and say anything to get that, even when it's not in the common interest. And what this resolution does, hopefully, is to shine a light on this reality and to do something that the news media of this community has not done. I got a call this morning from a TV reporter saying, why are you involved with this? I thought you were in favor of free speech. I said, because John and Ken and KFI are frauds and racists. He said, everyone knows that. I said, well, why aren't you reporting that? They don't report that, because there are massive conflicts of interest in our media, and this is a crystal-clear example of it. You are the only entity that can shine a light on this, and I ask you to do so today. Thank you for your time.
And in closing, I just want to again say thank you, Council Member Perry, thank you, Council Member Parks, thank you, Council Member President Herb Wesson, my council member, and everyone on the council. We urge you to please support this resolution. It's got to be important if it can bring all of these groups and all of these people together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for uniting and coming down. We still have a few other public comment cards on this item. I'm calling up Zuma Dog, Rick Nightingale in the Valley, and Matt Dowd, if you could please come forward. Zuma Dog? Well, let's go to the Valley right now for Matt, Rick Nightingale, then we'll go to Zuma Dog.
Yeah, you talk about, I don't listen to Ron and Ken, I'm sorry, I don't listen to talk radio, I listen to some music. I just got to get rid of all this other stuff. But I'll tell you, you talk about being free and the law and being prejudiced, look at the City Council! What do you call them? Because we're a sanctuary city! I can't believe it. You turn around and call up all this stuff, and you wonder why everything is going to the haybasket. Yeah, we have, everybody lives in the city of Los Angeles, but what do we do about that? I had a friend of mine, his kid goes down, two of them lately, wanted to get a job. You gotta be bilingual. You gotta speak Spanish, or we can't hire you. What is, what do you call that? Then you turn around and you wonder why everybody is upset? Because nothing's being done? And then the KFI, now you turn around, because they're all white, so then the black person comes up and says, well, you gotta hire the black. Well, if they want to hire, if that's the station, fine. Do you see a bunch of rap music? Do you see a bunch of white guys at a rap station? Even the City Council people, the Hispanics, they don't have no white people in some of the offices? So what is this, all this race shit? Can't everybody get along? You took the Valley away from me. I turned around and grew up in the San Fernando Valley, and I'm 67 years old, and look what you people done to the Valley to me. It looks like a sewer. And we thought it was like Beverly Hills back in the 60s and that. Everybody wanted to come to the Valley. But now look at it. I can't stand it. But now I live in a beautiful home, and I can't, I'm not going to sell it, but you turn around and think, what's taken away? Everything's been taken away from me in that sort of a way. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zuma Dog, followed by Matt Dowd.
Yes, I was gonna choose to talk about some other real city issues under real city jurisdiction, like housing that's coming up on the agenda, but I know that you guys are going to have to sit here for the next two hours. Let me just say that, as far as what the people said here, I heard most of it, it's absolutely fine. To bring this issue up is absolutely fine. To be offended and outraged at what these people are saying is absolutely fine. But this is the biggest joke I've never wanted to vomit all over this podium than I do right now. We have something called the FCC, and it's not Federal City Council, it's Federal Communication Commission. You people are now going to be a laughingstock, because you know what? What I'd prefer you be talking about right now, by the way, you got no jurisdiction over any of this. And let me read the statement on the record. "This is neither the time, place, or manner for council to talk about this non-municipal issue of which you have no jurisdiction. It's an FCC matter." Plus, you're perpetuating all this stuff that you're trying to squelch. I'd like to know, why don't you call Jamie Foxx up here, and Chris Tucker, and all these people with their comedy acts? And I'd also like to know, can I come up and sit here? Can I come up and sit here? Now, the main thing is, I'd like, some of the things why I'm very upset right now, is you took a lot of time on this just to put a hit on the KFI, which, again, I couldn't give an S about. I hate Clear Channel, I hope they go bankrupt, it's the worst filthy disgusting company that sucked the soul out of creativity, and I hope they all end up broke, all right? And I hope this hurts their shares and everything. But you guys are a bunch of clowns. You know what? Maybe KFI could talk about the fact that while you're sitting here with this BS, you had to fake the fire safety statistics, because you did such a mismanagement, fraud, waste, and abuse clown-ass job, and then you sit here and do this smoke screen, and meanwhile, the city's burning, you can't fix the sidewalks and you're getting sued, you got to fake fire statistics, because you're not operating the city, and let's spend all this time about something we got no jurisdiction, and then say that Zuma Dog and Matt Dowd abuses public comment, when we only talk about municipal things.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matt Dowd, followed by Arnold Sachs, and then Michael Carrion.
Okay, thank you, yes, and see, here's the problem now, I see it already. The City Council feels that it's fit to come down to the beach, violate artists, photographers, and performers, write tickets with LAPD, straight-out violations of street performing and Supreme Court rulings that are very clear. And so we come down to this podium to protest what the police are doing to us and expressing our First Amendment right to protest the government. And we get squelched at every little thing, and they bring up these rules, and they do everything they can to squelch, and then it gets to the word pussy. I mean, is that going to be banned from KFI?
Come on, Matt.
See, is that what you're standing up for?
Matthew, Matthew.
Excuse me, this is my problem.
Cut his time, your time is done. Matthew, do not use that word.
See, I don't.
If you want to use another word to substitute for it, do that. Show some respect to the women that are here, Matthew.
See, here's the problem, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals respectfully declined the city of Santa Cruz to rewrite the First Amendment, and that's what you're trying to do with us. And it's important, that's why we're still here. It's never going away, never. And they will rule, and they'll rule in favor of the radio stations if you try to do something, but you're not doing anything. It's all just warm and fuzzy, and nothing actually gets done. So I'm just tired of the double standard everywhere. You're sitting there, oh, yeah, the gays in Iraq are getting their bums glued and all these things, but you're violating, and this is a ticket for having a guitar case on the ground when I'm collecting donations and it's outside of their imaginary square, and everything else is in compliance. I mean, is that America? Is that what, is that what it's about? Do I have a right to be insane?
Thank you. Arnold Sachs, followed by Michael Carrion.
What an interesting conversation. I was really taken back by a couple of the comments I heard. Skewing the democratic process, business perpetrating as a fraud, but isn't that what politics is? Business perpetrating as a fraud? Come in here sometime and listen to the platitudes flow about...
Speak to the item, Mr. Sachs.
A wonderful job. We're talking about the language on the radio station. Somebody mentioned, somebody mentioned about perpetrating fraud. Politics is fraud. If you have a problem with controlling the interest, speak to that problem. Marshall McLuhan, back in the 60s, said, "If you control the medium, then you can control the message." That's what you need to look at. I have a suggestion. Why don't you broadcast from KFI? Then the council can implement its rules of decorum. And you could say, we won't allow that language over the radio, like you do here. And where would all these speakers be? When Don Imus made the comments about the Rutgers athlete, I didn't hear any backtalk from the City Council then. Where were you when the knucklehead showed up in City Council wearing a KKK outfit? I didn't hear any comment about that from anybody over here on the left. Where were you when the commentary was made about, from the sports analysts regarding linsanity, and how when the Knicks started losing, there was a chink in the armor? Where were all these people then? Where did you speak up about that? It is, unfortunately, turn the radio knob, use economic sanctions, it happens all the time. There's knuckleheads walking around from the church in Kansas City that want to protest funerals for soldiers, and the Supreme Court ruled, as disgusting as it is, they're still allowed to do it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Michael Carrion. Michael Carrion, Olga Hall, Arminak Njerian, Nora Janian. Michael.
Yes, we're talking about KFI, a talk radio that's privately owned, that's using its First Amendment rights. Once again, if you don't like what's being said, change the channel. If you want to hurt them, don't listen to their product. Boycott them. Get everybody else to boycott them. I mean, I'd just like to know, this city is going into bankruptcy, and this is what you spend all day on? Putting up stuff like this to get on there? Voice your opinion, I'm okay with that. But we sit here for half an hour with another dog and pony show of patting yourself on the back for doing a job, which, that's okay. You say you're only going to do it on Fridays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Fridays, every day you got proclamations, you got awards, you got everything else.
Speak to the issue.
So I am, I'll go back to the issue. If you want to conduct city business, conduct the city business, get that done with. This is something for the FCC, not for the City Council. The City Council has no business in freedom of speech. While we're here, while we're in your form, you conduct it, and you tell us what we can and cannot say, and how we can and cannot say it. Yet, you violate your own rules. Now, you want to go to a broadcast agency and tell them how to run their business when you can't even run yours properly? You say that the council members are allowed 50 words or 20 words after the rebuttal. They rebuttal all day long, violating the Brown Act. Nobody here says nothing, because nobody's going to say nothing against their colleagues, because they got to speak up once in a while to cover their own butts. Yet, this is America. This is not Germany, this is not, you are not Hitler. You are not here to control people's freedom of speech. If you don't like it, change it.
Thank you, Michael, thank you. Olga Hall, followed by Arminak Norrejanian.
Okay, racism is part of this society. We are hungry for power. We step on people's rights, we step on people's benefits for power. We could be great beings. Every single one of you has this potential. Everybody around me has that potential. But we've been brainwashed that we don't have no power. And so we give it away, we give it away to others to lead us. That's what we do, and that's why we lose the power, and that's why people become hungry for power. Everybody has the know-how to become great, but we give it away, because we think we don't have that power. Racism will continue because we want power. And racism, like everything else, divides us. Religion divides us, because our religion is better than the other. Economic power divides us, because we are better than someone else that has more money or less money. Education divides us greatly, because we use a language that is not for everybody, it's only for those that understand it, that make it complicated for people to understand it, for people to be equal. All of us, all of that divides us.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Respectable City Council members, good morning, fellow Argentinians. Actually, I actually suggest that you City Council members rejected Resolution 17, because that Resolution 17 actually infringes on freedom of speech, you know? And whatever expressions or whatever agenda is, or what politically correct agenda that KFI is, it's actually, it's a matter of conscience, you know? It's, I believe in a free country, it actually, we can regulate freedom of speech. We can, our opponents tell us to stick to our notions that we find compatible with our views, because it's not the way freedom of speech is. And as long as we want to live in a free country, we're supposed to respect freedom of speech. We're not supposed to prevent our people from expressing their point of view, even if it's politically incorrect or incompatible with ours. I believe that's the way we're supposed to agree to disagree, you know? And we're supposed to, actually, I believe that City Council members should pay attention more to essential needs of our... Angelenos, for instance. On paved roads or homeless encampments where actually, Los Angeles create, you know, eyesores, you know, and create blight and eyesores for Angelenos. Instead, we're just coming down to violate freedom of speech or politically incorrect KFI. Me personally, I had negative experiences with KFI. Radio force McIntyre or something, who expressed kind of neo-Nazi views, you know, about a few years ago. But I don't want to, you know, to remove our journalists off the air because, just because we're politically incorrect. It may be, actually, because I respect freedom of speech and I respect views of ours, you know, people. And I'm tolerant towards how people can say, you know.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, on the cue, we have Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Los Angeles. And I want to thank everybody who came out today. Ms. Kanek, thank you for putting together such an excellent group of speakers, Kevin Ross, and then Representative from the Urban League, Mr. Ziegler, thank you very much, Mr. Nogales, Ms. Oak, thank you very much. And if I miss anyone, please forgive me. This is a great city and a diverse city and it's something that should be celebrated. And when we hear unnecessarily demeaning language that does not just disparage one individual, but an entire group of people, it is disheartening. And I think that today we have taken our power and made a stand to work together with diverse communities to make it clear that we too can exercise our First Amendment rights. Now, it's my understanding that since the incidents took place on the airwaves, representatives from the Black Media Alliance, the National Hispanic Media Coalition, and other groups have met with management of KFI and are working together to develop a plan to promote diversity. And I assume that's still the case. No, it's not the case. Okay, it's not the case. All right, well then delete that last sentence. So, we'll continue to speak up and I want to thank all of them for working so diligently on behalf of everyone's community. I think that this city is an accepting city and a vibrant city. I think this dialogue today can make a difference. So I appreciate the time that you put into this.
Okay, before I call the next member, I'd like to call up Alicia Barnett. And I know that you were here yesterday and we continued the item. I don't know how your card got lost, but please take your time.
Well, thank you for opening the floor back up. My name is Alicia Barnett and I am the California Representative for the Minority Media and Telecommunications Council. We're a national nonprofit that promotes diversity and civil rights within the mass media, telecommunications, and broadband industries. And I have prepared a statement. I did give all of you my full statement, but in essence of time, I will try to keep it brief. So I want to thank you for this opportunity to present the views of the MMTC on the proposed resolution as currently published. Throughout our 25-year history as the nation's leading advocacy organization for diversity in the media, MMTC has consistently demanded that our free airwaves be free of race and gender stereotyping. MMTC has endorsed the National Hispanic Media Coalition's petition to the FCC that requests it monitor and maintain statistics on hate speech. MMTC believes that all broadcasters trusted with the stewardship of the airwaves, not just KFI, but all radio and television operators, should produce content that's thoughtful, open to diverse opinion, and produces dialogue without hateful attacks. The resolution makes a good statement. It asks for action without government regulation. You're asking broadcasters to make the right changes to their programming while also protecting the First Amendment and the Communications Act. But I'd also like to add that MMTC is very, knows Clear Channel very well. Our media brokerage has sold 45 of Clear Channel stations to minorities and we're using six of Clear Channel stations to train minorities and women to be broadcast owners. Last week, Clear Channel launched a new weekday program called Diverse LA. I don't know if you've had a chance to listen in or not. The premise of Diverse LA is to bring new voices and new topics to the radio dial and to build a community's understanding of diversity. Some citizens have criticized the show because KTLK's audience isn't as large as KFI's audience, and that's a fair criticism, but I think it ignores the power of internet, of the internet and the radio. In addition to being broadcast on 1150 AM, the program also plays on the internet.
Thank you.
I hope that you all get a chance to read my full statement.
Thank you, and we shall, thank you. On the cue is Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to acknowledge the speakers that are here this morning and my good friend, the former judge, who still plays judge and makes more money than a real judge. Thank you. The City of Los Angeles is critical that we respect one another in this great diverse city. The diversity is a strength of our city. Talk radio plays an important role in the City of Los Angeles and we have honored in this council chambers, radio stations such as KFI, when they covered extreme stories. Their news operations were honored by this council. We also honored KNX recently for what they did in coverage to the people of Los Angeles. However, the question today, the recent comments by the personalities, we cannot accept that and they're out of bounds and excusable. The hosts made the comments, they've been disciplined, they've been suspended, and the station has made public apology in addition to the hosts making public apology. And I think what we learned from this is that they stepped up and said, "We have erred and we want to correct that." And I look at the diverse groups that are here today, African-American, Hispanic, Asian, Korean-American, here as a coalition, as a unity, saying, "We want to make a difference." We support media sensitivity, workplace diversity. We support that and I support in my office, the diversity of this city is reflective in the office that I have and the personnel working for me. All media outlets in Los Angeles, not just this area, should practice diversity and help people. Numerous examples beyond the ones that are cited in this motion of television, radio stations crossing the line insulting women and ethnic minorities. And there's a number of cases we can cite over and over. And what I want to do is expand on the resolution and make a friendly amendment to Ms. Perry on this resolution with Mr. Parks and Mr. Wesson, that it state, expanded to show that the City of Los Angeles is not singling out one media outlet, but making a statement that all media in our city should show respect for our diversity and do what they can to promote diversity in the workplace. And that this would apply to all media, not just one KFI station. And I think the lady who just spoke reflects that, that we want this to expand to everyone. So with that friendly amendment, if we can add that language to that resolution. And I think that none of us in this body representing the City of Los Angeles, the people of Los Angeles, promote anything other than positive opportunities. And what we're sending is a message, not censorship, but be receptive to the diversity of this great city. And whether it's an African-American issue, a Latino issue, a gay issue, whatever the issue, to show that sensitivity. So I would hope that resolution can be supported within this resolution by my colleagues, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, and Mr. Wesson. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendorf.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I ask John Ziegler to come up real quickly? I want to ask him one question and I have some comments to make. I'm curious what happened in 2008. You've been there, you said, four years. Something triggered you to make that decision and then to be so public just now, like you have about racism.
Well, thank you for your question, Councilman. I felt like when I was at KFI for four years, I was kind of like in a mafia. This was kind of like working for the mob. And I had had it. And I feel kind of like I'm trying to be a whistleblower here for a reality that is bad for Southern California and is emblematic of a larger reality which is bad for America, which is that so many media outlets, and KFI is the worst among them, are actually businesses disguised as First Amendment factories promoting a cause or free speech. And that's wrong. Now, that shouldn't be illegal, but it should be exposed. And unfortunately, there's no way to expose this reality because there are so many conflicts within other media outlets that they don't want to talk about it and Clear Channel owns so many outlets themselves. For instance, I told a story about John Cobell that ought to be newsworthy. Every news outlet in Los Angeles ought to tell that story. They won't. Why won't they? For a lot of reasons, but it's not because they don't think I'm telling the truth. As a matter of fact, I challenged John Cobell to a $100,000 lie detector test. I will take a lie detector test, he can take a lie detector test. If he passes and I fail, I will give $100,000 to his favorite charity. He won't take that because he knows I'm telling the truth. And unfortunately, no one in the media, no one in the media will pressure him into taking that test or even pressing him on this issue because we're all a bunch of lapdogs going along because it's a business, it's not a cause, and that needs to be exposed. And that's why I'm here today.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Colleagues, many of you know that over the years, I have produced and hosted television shows, over 3,000 of them, and I've done some radio. So I'm speaking from a position of my own involvement in this. The FCC, back in the 80s, deregulated that whole issue of what we are doing on television, be it cable or broadcast or on the radio. People own the airwaves, you see, and yet the people's airwaves have been given to the business community purely and simple. In this town, we have all these television stations, all these radio stations, and around the nation as well. It's all soundbite journalism, it's all bleed if it leads, it's all controversial to get people yelling at each other and screaming. And frankly, it helps their ratings and it helps them sell soap or whatever the commercial is, be it a 30-second political commercial that you see all these super PACs doing. And the people gave it up because what happened in Congress and with our president then was that, all right, if it bleeds, it leads, that'll help advertisers. Well, they got rid of substantive programming, they got rid of stuff where people could finish their sentences and their thoughts. Every time I did a show, I always had two women and two men, always, no matter what. And when it was an issue like the Mideast, I had every point of view there. And I would let people finish their sentences and their thoughts. What happened in the 80s was dramatically changing it. That's why the United States of America today has very little legitimate media to inform and educate the people on the issue.
Mr. Rosendorf.
And I'll push my button again because I want to continue this comment. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Wesson for bringing this matter. You know, this has nothing to do with the First Amendment. This has nothing to do with freedom of expression. Some of my greatest heroes, as a lawyer, some of my greatest heroes have been those who have stood up and fought against government oppression of even the most vile speech with which they fundamentally disagree, because they've stood up for our basic constitutional principles against government suppression of speech. But there's a difference between standing up against government suppression of speech and tolerating as a society, the kind of vile speech that we're talking about here today. Not government suppressing it, but just whether as a society, we can tolerate this kind of hateful, vile, despicable speech. We heard, we heard comments today during public comment, standing up and justifying the murder of a child based on hate. We heard someone stand up and justify that. Now, should we turn that person's mic off and prevent them from speaking? No. But as a society, how can we ever tolerate that as a society? Now, I happen to believe that all of the ills of freedom of speech can be cured by more speech, more opportunity, more opposition, when we hear vile ideas. That's what we're doing today. It's appropriate, it's exactly appropriate for this council to speak up against the kind of vile things that we've heard on the airwaves. And I agree with Mr. Zine, I would like to, you know, make even a broader statement about some of the things that we're hearing, because it's not just KFI. It's a coarsening of society that we're experiencing throughout the media and throughout public discourse that is ruining democracy in this country because this is all about hatred and personalization of what should be public issues. You know, the McCarthy era in the 1950s came to an end, not because someone passed a resolution, not because someone passed a law, but because one brave government lawyer, one lawyer stood up to Senator McCarthy and said, "At long last, sir, have you no decency?" And with that one statement, the McCarthy era began to crumble. At long last, folks, have we no decency as a society? Can't we just reject this kind of speech? Do we, we don't need to legislate it, but as a society, can't we all agree that that is not acceptable conduct in a free society? Can't we all agree with that? So with that statement, I would respectfully ask that we stand up and support this item. And again, I want to.
Shh, can you guys be quiet? Keep it down, keep it down.
And a case in point.
Again, Mr. City Attorney disrupting the meeting again.
A case in point, exactly. That it has to be about, you know, disruption and not just agreeing that as a society, we should act in a decent, respectful, non-hateful way. And that's what this resolution calls for. I want to thank the authors and I ask for your eye vote.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Krikorian. That was well said. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you.
Okay, Sergeants, he's just, he's continually disrupting the meeting. Have a discussion with him or ask him to leave. Mr. Zine, Mr. Zine, we're okay.
Mr. President, he has disrupted this meeting continuously. He needs to be removed from the council chambers so we can conduct this meeting in a proper fashion. He's continually disrupted the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Reyes.
And for the record, that was Matt Dowd who was removed from the meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Reyes.
Well, colleagues, I just stand to not only agree, but I also want to ask a question. I think the economics of this discussion was a very interesting perspective. And as we engage this conversation, I think what really stands out is the ability for those who are listening to this discourse to realize their power by just understanding who supports these types of radio shows, to understand who the sponsors are, to understand that they have the discretion not to support companies that would want to continue this kind of diatribe and meanness. And something one of my folks that I work with here in my office, they made the observation that it's about four years now, five years, that we see this ugliness, this meanness in our airwaves. And it's okay now to insult the president. It's okay now to go after elected officials in a manner that we see here three times a week, where we are constantly being degraded in a manner that reflects a certain meanness in our society. And that's something that needs to change. But it changes because we can act based on what's in our pocketbooks and our wallets and who we support. So yes, if more than half the city are people of color and we choose not to support the companies that are supporting KFI, and I'll just say it, then maybe they will understand that their business is not good business. It is not tolerable, it's not acceptable to continue to behave in a manner that degrades whole communities, people, men and women, because we are fulfilling this ugly stereotype that comes from hatred. And that's something that needs to change. So I want to thank my colleagues for allowing us to have this discussion in a calm manner, to understand what the professionals are going through in truly trying to achieve the freedom of speech, but also to understand that as professionals, we have an obligation to conduct ourselves in a manner that makes us healthier, that creates a future for our kids, to limit the hatred and to establish the sense of decorum that is taken away from this meanness. So again, I stand to support this resolution and my colleagues in hoping that in responding to this ugliness, this meanness, that we could get to a place where we can have the kind of discourse that allows us to move forward in a much healthier way. And I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alacant.
Councilmembers, I think in a very articulate way, all of you have expressed our feelings here. I think, stated simply, to suggest that a politician doesn't have the right to express their opinion is ridiculous at its core and it's, it's a fundamental opportunity that we have as elected officials to, to say what we think. And in this case, we are expressing our concerns about a radio station that is baiting racism and promoting hate through either deliberate or, or very strategic phraseology that they use on their radio station. So I think it's fair game, you know. I have no problem with expressing my opinion against this radio station that I believe is, is acting irresponsibly in a social sense in terms of. I believe is acting irresponsibly in a social sense in terms of the rights of democracy. But I wanted to focus on one particular individual. There was some mention of Bill Handel. Bill Handel, while he is criticizing the city of Los Angeles and criticizing government officials, is a guy who comes to this council not necessarily directly, but indirectly through a partnership that he is heavily invested in to get approvals on housing projects and mostly in my district. Now, he hasn't worked with me since I came back to the city council, but my point is not whether or not the housing projects are justifiable or not, but the irony of this guy criticizing city government and then taking advantage to ask for variances, to ask for lot splits, to ask for density bonuses, to take advantage of the government process to make money. In fact, he had a legislator introduce a bill that would give him by right opportunity to redevelop the Verdugo Hills Golf Course and undermine city authority on the land use level. Wendy Gruel had a fit. The LA Times shot the bill down within two weeks. And that's the kind of guy who is going on the radio station saying the government's bad, but taking advantage of it. So I think it's just amazing to me, I wish his listeners could know this, but who is reporting that part of it? Who is reporting that this radio guy is telling people one thing, but he's acting out another thing to make money? And because of that, it exposes him as a profit taker. I don't even know if he really believes in the stuff he says. I believe he's fake. And because he, how can you, how can you as a human being with dignity do one thing and then talk about it in another sense on the radio to criticize it? That is the kind of, that is the kind of thing that we are targeting here, that kind of irony. And if we can't express our opinion to say that that is wrong for society, that is bad for society, then I think that is a more dangerous path. When politicians stop expressing their opinions, believe me, that is a very dangerous path.
Thank you.
I want to thank my colleagues for introducing this measure. I'm happy to support it. Let's send a message to KFI, albeit mild and weak in comparison to the power of the radio voice that they have. Nevertheless, never say it's too little. We always, each step can create change, but it takes many in some cases.
Thank you, Richard. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too want to thank the authors of this motion and the speakers who came to speak today. And I want to just again reiterate what everyone has said here today, and that is that this is not about stifling freedom of speech, but very plain and simply, this is about denounces racist and sexist remarks. And a radio station is under the governmental jurisdiction of the FCC, and there are minimum standards that need to be upheld. That's what we're talking about. This is not someone on a street corner expressing their freedom of speech, but these are individuals that have to abide by federal laws and regulation under what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. That is the underlying discussion here. This morning, when I left my home, I was watching the news, and they were discussing, why should the city council even be involved with this? Why have this motion? Somebody wrote in on Twitter that, you know, hey, we should be addressing some of the most important issues facing the city, such as unemployment and the necessary job creation that we need to do. But at the end of the day, this is about that, because one of the strengths of this city is its diversity. We have over 45% of the people who live in this city who are immigrants. They come with a strong worth ethic. They come with the need to achieve and want to achieve the American dream. Now, if these racist and sexist remarks are being said and no one stands up and says that that is unacceptable, that will stifle our economy, that will stifle our job creation. This is the right thing and the responsible thing for the city council to do. And if we don't stand up, that silence will be deafening to all who want to protect the diversity here in the city of Los Angeles. We should be involved with this. We are involved with this, and we need to send a strong message, even if it stirs up even more controversy, because it's something we need to defend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank Jasmine and all of the group that came to the center table. This is something that has been going on for a number of years. We can go back just a couple of years ago with the Rutgers basketball team and a variety of other things. And it is something in which I think a while back, many women in the community had a "respect me" campaign where there was discussions about how particularly black women were being portrayed in movies and other media. And I think it's, you know, people have talked about the First Amendment, and they talk about civil rights, but I think from what I've understood, that your civil rights stop when you start violating other people's civil rights. And so it's something in which many people have failed to use that common sense and that barometer. But I think what also would help is that there are many people that are in the public domain that add to that fuel, that go on those shows for those very, very interesting conversations and add fuel to that fire. And that also is a way to stop that marketing and stop those ratings if public individuals were not part of the fray. And I think because it brings credibility when they're brought into that. Last time I was on, what is it, John and Ken or whatever, they cut the phone off when I called them both idiots, so they don't call me back anymore. And so it's one of those things that you find that you can clear your calendar and you can have a free mind in how you deal with things if you don't participate in that kind of dialogue. It's no, it's not of help to anyone to participate in that, and it certainly doesn't help the community. And this one is kind of interesting that it went viral because of the subject and the young lady just basically testifying about her body. That was where another person who cannot have children basically says, "I don't, I'm going to call you a name because you're defending the use of your body." I think that's what caused this to get a much larger... It didn't get the same thing with Rutgers. It didn't get the same thing with many others with Whitney Houston. And the issue is, it's unfortunate because they're just as damaging, particularly since these women, black women, are role models for so many people, yet they're being disparaged by people just because they can. And I think it's important that this issue is brought up, and I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I wanted to follow up, Mr. Parks, and thank each and every one of you who spoke and said that. I also want to state, I listen to K-Earth 101 because I want to have some quality in my life, and K-Earth plays music that brings us to the right time. And those who speak on talk radio often are hidden in a box in a sound room, and they're not engaging with people. They're speaking of things horribly, and it hurts people. And to ever hurt people, it's not anyone's business. And I do wish the FCC would regulate better. And also sometimes, and all of us, on any walk, you make mistakes. But it's not a mistake when they continually make the mistake. The coach teaches you how to block a tackle, but when they continue to block a tackle in an unfair way below the belt, you're thrown out of the game. So I would just like to say, this is an important moment from time to time the city council has and makes a voice. No one should be hurt by speech, and this has happened all too often. And I want to stand to rise to thank Mr. Wesson, Mr. Parks, and also always Ms. Perry for bringing this to their attention. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I think almost everything has been said so articulately, and, you know, when folks criticize what we do in this, in these chambers, if we spend an hour on something that I see is critically important out of 80 hours in our work week, it is time well spent. We have children in these chambers. We have people who are watching. And to Mr. Weezer's point, every time we don't answer hatred with love, we don't answer hatred with speech, we do ourselves a disservice. I think it was Martin Luther King who said that hate cannot drive out hate, only love can. And when we look at what our responsibility is to make sure that we get beyond the language that we hear and what that means in a city where an overwhelming majority, probably 80% of people are either women or people of color in this city, and you look at our responsibility to make sure that we have for that young person who all they hear when they're flipping the dial is caricatures instead of actual role models, we have a responsibility to stand up and to be heard. You know, nobody comes and criticizes us for squashing free speech when it comes time for us to remember the Armenian genocide. Every year, we stand right here, Mr. Krikorian leads us, and saying, every time we hear a lie out there, we must tell the truth. And everybody says, of course, that's a responsible thing for this body to do. But when you press that same button in a different way and you add people to say something who are just as hateful and just as leading a road down where we have seen acts of violence occur, where we see the economic degradation that is allowed when we have that discrimination, suddenly we have voices who say, you're squashing my free speech. We are not. I think it was Shakespeare who said that, "In time we hate that which we often fear." And whenever I hear hatred in speech, it's because somebody out there fears something. They fear the change of the demography of the city. They fear the diversity of this world. They fear otherness and difference. But I want to thank those who have come before us today to say that there is strength in who we are. There is strength in our diversity. There is strength in our creativity, and there is strength in our voice. And nobody will ever have their voice taken away, but we can drown out that hatred with a loud chorus that we bring together around this horseshoe and this city. This didn't come from this horseshoe. This came from our city, and we are proud to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Zine to close.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. And there's a clarification that apparently the clerk didn't understand exactly the... Well, wait, let me just, I don't want to... The city clerk needs to make sure he understands what the friendly amendment is doing. So the first resolved clause would become, now therefore, be it resolved that the adoption of this resolution, the city council urges the management of all radio and television stations in Los Angeles to do everything in their power to ensure that their on-air hosts do not use and promote racist and sexist slurs over the public airways in the city of Los Angeles. That's what the friendly amendment, so you've got that. And I'll give a copy of it so you know.
Very good, sir.
Okay, and that was seconded by Rosenbaum.
Mr. Labange.
Should KFI move from Los Angeles, from first in Vermont, where they were for 50 years, to sixth at Ardmore in the Koreatown, Wilshire area, to Burbank? So you just say Los Angeles. Say if the sound of my voice in Los Angeles, the airwaves of Los Angeles, not just the city of Los Angeles...
Why don't we just say the entire universe?
No, I think you should be specific.
Because they can't broadcast over the internet. I mean, the bottom line is, we want to send this.
All right, but I think you should be specific.
Mr. Labange, okay, let, thank, Mr. Zine is appreciative of the suggestion.
We want to make it...
Mr. Zine, we're back.
Wide enough as possible. So that's the resolve. Thank you.
Okay. Has it been accepted? Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks?
Yeah.
Okay. No other speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, two noes.
Let's move on to the next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 16, called "Special for Cards."
Item 16? Zuma Dogg, I don't see him. Dr. Tom Williams, I believe he's left as well. Arnold Sachs is not here. Matt Dowd is not here. Olga Hall. Thank you.
Redistricting, what is that? Friday's show was just a theater, a pretension as a service to the public. The council's ego is so inflated with their illusion of power that they have lost all sense of ethics, honor, and empathy. You ignore the hundreds of people that came on Friday and gave the vote that had always been decided behind closed doors. You gave an oath with your hand on a sacred book, the Bible or Torah, to serve the people of this city. Then you turn around and act as a politician, forgetting your oath. Redistricting has shown how corrupted this council is, and as long as we have an ignorant public that acts like sheep, you will continue to do what you are doing. But beware, your bubble can burst any minute.
Ms. Perry is on the queue.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. As many of you know, I tried to get this motion heard before the final vote on the redistricting maps this past Friday, and this motion that was done with two other motions that have already been sent to Rules and Election and will die a natural death. This was an effort to correct some of the deficiencies of the redistricting process and what the commission had done, and to reduce the potential for liability to the city. This motion attempted to get public hearing time periods for people in each council district and make sure that we had reasonable advance notification to each council office so that members could mobilize their communities. And we had also asked for a comprehensive racially polarized voting analysis and methodology for tracking public input about the maps and a set of mapping guidelines, and this was not done. The body voted against it. And I feel, in talking to outside council, that some of you may be, have placed yourselves in a punitive liability situation with such blatant disregard for these efforts. So I stated my point. You have the motion here. Let's not play games, and let's not pretend. There's no reason to send this to committee. Let this have a death with dignity, and why don't you just take care of it now here on the council floor? And let's not send it to committee to die where the other, other motions that I prepared will die too. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Members, as a member of the committee, Rules, which we spent many hours, I think we're going to look at a lot of things, and I ask this to be referred to committee. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Perry, what was your suggestion? What did you want us to do on this item?
I would say I would like for you to kill it now. There is no reason to send it to committee. It's a charade or charade, like tomato, tomato. There's nothing to discuss anymore. It's over with. The map is done. The legislative process next goes to the hands of the mayor, so why would you want to send it to Rules and Elections? It's not timely. It's over, just like the other motions that got sent to Rules and Elections, the one that I did on asking commissioners to prepare a journal of all of their external contacts, and the next motion that I did asking for, you know, members to have time to mobilize their communities, asking for an additional hearing in South Los Angeles and for Koreatown. Now it's no longer relevant. So there's no need to send this to committee unless it's some exercise in feeling good. So why don't you just drop it? Let's move on. The next step is whether the mayor will veto the maps or not, and then after that, the legislative remedies have then been exhausted, and, you know, everybody knows what we do after that. So let's stop playing games. Just drop it.
Okay, thank you.
So there's no need to send it to committee. I vote, I say no on sending it to committee.
Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, can we just receive and file this, or what would you recommend?
We do have a duly seconded motion from Councilmember Labange to refer it to committee. The maker of the motion has requested that it be received and filed. If she were to get a second, that matter could then be before you.
Mr. Lab...
I can retract my motion.
Very good, sir.
And as the author of the motion. But I will mention to your members, I think after this is all done, it would be good to have a robust discussion on all the processes that we are. But if the maker of the motion wants it, I reject my motion that I put in.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, did you, okay, take Mr. Weezer off the queue. All right, at this time, yes.
I did not ask for a receiving and file. I think you should just vote it up or down. And the question is whether or not to send it to committee. I say no.
All right. I'm okay with that. What?
Mr. President, with the withdrawal of the motion, and the maker of the motion hasn't withdrawn her motion, she's requesting that the matter... Correct, correct. Mr. Labange is... Mr. Labange's motion to refer the matter has now been withdrawn. The maker of the motion is now requesting that the motion receive a no vote or be defeated. So the actual content of the motion is now before you for a vote.
I'm sending the motion to committee. That is what I am asking for. I want to vote...
No, but Mr. Labange has withdrawn the request to send it...
My motion has nothing to do with Mr. Labange.
As the maker of the motion, as a member of the committee, I think if this motion and other things that will come about in the next few months, maybe there should be an opportunity to discuss that. But if the maker of the motion wants it just denied any action, I would gladly, as a courtesy, withdraw my motion. I just think it should go to committee and let it sit in committee when we have the discussion. We have the discussion.
Okay. In fact, this is what we're going to do. Ms. Perry had a motion before us that made a series of requests. So at this point in time, I believe Ms. Perry is requesting a no vote on this item, and I would support that. No?
She wants a number down. She wants a number down. No vote. She wants a no vote. I think the issue of the substance of the motion, she would say, yes, the motion should be passed.
Okay. All right, well, let's do this. So what we're going to do, members, we're going to just vote on the motion as is. Ms. Perry is requesting an I vote, and Mr. Labange is requesting a no vote. So it's just no on the... Mr. Weezer?
I motion that we receive and file this motion, and the fact of the matter is, is if you look at the substance of this motion, who's not going to be for a comprehensive, an objective for a hearing process? And if we vote no, it's sending a different message. I supported Mr. Labange's motion to send it to committee because we do have to look at this. It's not the last time this city will undergo a process of redistricting, and so to take it with all other motions, it'd be good to take it in a comprehensive fashion. So I would ask that if we're not going to send it to committee, as Mr. Labange suggested, that we just receive and file, and that's my motion.
Mr. Krikoria?
Well, it seems if we look specifically to this motion, this motion, I mean, I agree with Mr. Weezer that all of the issues that are raised in this motion should be looked at more comprehensively for our redistricting process as a whole. But all of the elements of this motion pertain to the redistricting process that we've already completed, and so it really is... The operative language in this is moot. So I think this is appropriate to be received and filed rather than referred to committee. The committee process, you know, is what it is. I mean, we can evaluate, but the operative language of this motion already relates to what we've already voted on, and so it... I mean, it really is... The operative language in this is moot. So I think the appropriate action would be receive and file rather than referral to the committee.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Weezer, seconded by Eric. So, Mr. Clerk, what would be the...
Who?
Okay, Ms. Parks. I see Mr. Parks.
Let me just say...
I don't know if that was from the previous...
No, I just pushed the button. The issue, I think, is important. For those who say we're going to talk about it in committee, may not be a surprise to you, the next redistricting is 10 years from now, so you may not be around. The next thing is that the issue that's on the motion never got discussed because it was sent to committee the first time. The motion that's before you was bringing it out of committee, which was voted down, and that was supposed to have been heard on the 16th, and it wasn't, so it brought this week. So the issue that is relevant in the commission, or in the motion, has never been voted on, and the issue is what was being brought to everyone's attention were things that were lapses in the committee, in the commission's process, that we're trying to get corrected in the council process. The council never addressed it, never implemented any of them, and so to say that they've been voted on and that who would be opposed to them, those that were opposed to them are the ones that voted against having it heard. So the issue is today, it is the same relevant issue. They were asked to correct the deficiencies of the commission process. It was a vote not to hear that, send it to committee, and it's never been acted upon. And so the key issue is today, if you were in support of fair hearings, having a reporting process, and a variety of things, then you wouldn't have sent it to committee before.
Mr. Alakon?
Councilmembers, this motion is troubling. I concur with Mr. Weezer on this, that in fact, to support this motion is to essentially suggest that there is something wrong with our process, and to not vote for the motion is to suggest that we don't want to consider it, or to ensure that we continuously improve the redistricting process. I agree with Mr. Parks. I think only Mr. Buscoeno and Mitch Englander will have the chance of being here in 12 years unless they go to the Senate. And no matter what we do in consideration of this process, the next batch of city council members in eight years can do it entirely differently at their choosing. So I feel uncomfortable being put in the position to vote this matter up or down. I just think it's... Do I want to continuously improve the process? Absolutely. Do I want to vote on this to suggest that I believe there may be some problems with the process that occurred? I don't think that this is the time to do that, but I think that at some point, we absolutely should review. This process is not completed, by the way. The redistricting process is not completed, and it will be challenged. And if it is challenged, or I assume it will be challenged, but if it is challenged, we certainly... It would be appropriate for us to consider changes at that time. But that, you know, I anticipate that time would be in about a year or two, and I don't think we should beg the question now to basically just put a bunch of council members in an awkward position. I don't think that's... I don't think that's good. I don't think that's in the spirit of the demeanor in which we should be operating, and I think we should either... We should... I actually prefer sending it to committee, man, at the appropriate time, considering it, but that doesn't mean, you know, next week, maybe in a couple of years. So with that, I'll vote my... The way I believe.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
I want to remember, as Mr. Alakon said, we also have L.A. Unified Redistricting. And also, one thing that I, just for a moment of thought here, in some of the values that were set out, were those values met for us? Were rivers, freeways, what other boundaries that were set in some way? I will ask for only the thought, that thought, but if we receive and file it, either way, at some time, we should discuss it again as how we do, but it may be a different motion at that time or a different element to review.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you send it to committee, it will die a certain death, and let's be honest about it. And in the parlance of many of the gentlemen that I spend three days a week with, it's just business, okay? So cut it out with that, okay? Cut it out with the receive and file. You don't mean it. You're just sending it off to end it. And, Richard, you know this is not the end of the process. The mayor has the opportunity to sign it, or veto it, or do nothing. So there is one more step in the process, but I think you're all aware of the fact that there is no further action to be taken by this council, at least at this point. And once the mayor either vetoes, signs, or takes no action, and the proper time has elapsed, then it is out of our hands, and then either it stands or it will be challenged. And I think we all know that, so let's not be revisionist in our thinking because that is the reality of it. So, you know, don't send it to committee. That's just a joke. Just be man enough to stand up and say, "I'm going to deal with it right here, right now, on the floor, having talks about something that may happen two years from now or 10 years from now." That's just sort of kicking it down the... What's the expression? Kicking the can down the street, or whatever it is. This is business, okay? So let's behave in the here and now. You know, everybody got what they wanted already, so, you know, you've got nothing to lose. There's nothing at risk here. At least at this point, your maps are going to stay the way they are, and, you know, whatever agreements are honored are honored. We had the 13 to 2 vote, so, you know, let's just let this... Let's roll with this. You know, don't send it to committee, because if you send it to committee, it dies. Let's just talk about it here, in this present time, now.
Mr. Alakon?
You know, after passing a resolution on baiting, I really am offended by the comment about manning up here. There's no question about gender here. This is about people making decisions based on their best judgment. What I said, Ms. Perry, was that we should kick the can down the road until all the facts are in. All the facts are not in, and we should not... I believe we should not move this... Move consideration of your item at this time, but at the appropriate time, I think it makes sense to consider it. You know, this is... This was a political battle. People won, people lost. Talk about gamesmanship, you know, you lost, and that's all there is to it. I mean, so let's call it what it is. These things, these... I mean, you're entitled to introduce these things, and, you know, but don't...
He has some form, Ms. Perry.
Do not question my manhood over an issue that has to do with redistricting. My God, Janice, you're better than that.
Mr. Englander?
I want to call for the question.
All right, the question's been called.
Mr. President, is there any objection?
I don't see or hear any. So with that said, what's before us now, Mr. Clerk?
Objection.
Ms. Perry objects. So now we'll vote on calling the question?
Mr. President, we'd now vote on calling the question.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, two noes.
All right, now what is before us? The motion to receive and file this?
Yes, sir.
All right, on that issue, let us open the roll.
No, no. Mr. President, pardon me, it's a motion to refer to committee.
No, no, no. The last motion, I thought, was Mr. Weezer and Garcetti, which was to receive and file it.
Very good, sir.
Okay, then, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, two noes.
Okay, next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 14, called Special for Cards.
Okay, let me find the cards on 14. On 14, I have cards on Zuma Dog and Matt Dowd. They are no longer in chambers, so let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 15, called Special for Cards.
Item 15, we have Zuma Dog, Matt Dowd, Arnold Sacks. They're not here on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, at this time, members, announcements, announcements, members? Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, with the Trust for Public Land, we will formally dedicate the 138 acres west to the Hollywood sign that preserved Coinga Peak and also helped create the rim of the valley, which is so important. I want to thank my colleagues on the council, the Department of Recreation and Parks, all the private donors, and especially the Trust for Public Land, and single out the private donors, the Tiffany Foundation, Eileen Getty, as well as Hugh Hefter, that contributed to this, and all the citizens of Los Angeles, city and county, and the state.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Members, any other announcements? Mr. Labange?
This is the 70th anniversary of one of the greatest films ever made, Casablanca, which starred Ingrid Bergman and Humphrey Bogart. We salute Casablanca on its 70th anniversary.
Any other announcements? Then let's... Mr. Englander?
Two quick announcements. One, today is our Sergeant-at-Arms birthday. Steve Morris is in the back. He's going... Oh, he's out, he's going to get him. He hid when I found out it was his birthday, so...
Smart move, smart move.
He's in here, he's in here every day protecting us, so I wanted to acknowledge his birthday today as soon as he comes back in. And then the other announcement is, and I know many of you know, but tomorrow evening is the 15th Annual Los Angeles Political Roast to support the American Diabetes Association. This is a great cause. It's a terrific organization. I'm one of the chairman of the event as well, but we are roasting the Honorable Herb West and our council president, so I look forward to all of you attending tomorrow night as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more announcements? Mr. Labange?
Last... Yesterday evening was the first day of spring. We welcome springtime.
Okay, Mr. Labange, do you have any more announcements?
I love you.
Any more announcements? Adjourning motion? If everybody in the chambers could rise for adjourning motions, Mr. Englander?
I have an adjourning motion. I did have another announcement that I did want to mention, that the Granada Hills Charter High School in my district, for the second year in a row, won the Academic Decathlon Championship again. I wanted to mention that. On the adjourning motion, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Jack Arian, who passed away peacefully at his home at age 91 on March 16th. Born on October 31st, 1920, in Salt Lake City, Jack was the youngest of 11 children. His parents immigrated from Russia and Wales, where his older brothers and sisters were born. From Wales, the family moved to Utah and eventually settled here in Los Angeles. When World War II broke out, he enlisted in the United States Army Air Forces and was honorably discharged in 1945. A genius in business and real estate, Jack started with little in his pocket and died a prosperous and generous man. He opened his first Army-Navy surplus store in 1946, the Supply Sergeant. Over a period of 60 years, he opened and closed 40 stores, four of which are still in operation. His main store in Burbank, with its trademark tank parking front, is a local landmark. Jack employed hundreds of loyal men and women over the years, many of whom became lifelong friends. Jack also found time and energy for extensive civic service. He was chairman of the Parker Foundation in Los Angeles and very involved in L.A. PD affairs. He was a mason and a schriner, and in 1982, he was honored as Man of the Year. A devoted family man, Jack's greatest pleasure was spending time with his wife Sylvia, of course, his beloved dogs and parrots, his children, and his grandson. A man of enormous kindness and generosity, Jack was truly a member of the greatest generation. If I could ask all members as well, please, thank you.
All members, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of an active community member in the East Side of Los Angeles, Irene Esparza Portillo. She was born and raised in the East Side of Los Angeles and in Boyle Heights and was a longtime resident of the city of Los Angeles. She was a founder and executive director of Project Amiga, a nonprofit that she founded in 1989 in an effort to empower her community through education and job training. She worked tirelessly to address the high unemployment rate and high school dropout rate by providing low-income youth, adults, and their families access to education and job training and placement. Project Amiga was recognized by Pareto, Hardean, Community Guarding at its Your Day in the Sun for bringing seeds of change to the Boyle Heights community and helping it to grow and prosper. She always had the best interest of our community, and she will be greatly missed by those whose lives she touched. She leaves behind her children, Desiree and Darren, her son-in-law, Paul Robinoff, and grandchildren, Oloma and David. Rosemary Services will be held on Thursday, March 29th, at 6:00 p.m. at Boggs Mortuary in Boyle Heights, and a memorial mass on Friday, March 30th, at a Simpson Church at 11:00 a.m. Colleagues, I also ask that we adjourn in memory of David Anthony Daroca, the son of Lupe and Mario Padilla. He was their only son. He was a close and personal friend of mine, and David Anthony Daroca was born on June 18th, 1982, and passed away in a car accident this past Friday, March 16th, at 2012. He was only 19. David lived in Whittier with his parents, Lupe and Maria Padilla. He was attending Cal State Fullerton, hoping to graduate in 2014. He was an avid golfer and enjoyed playing basketball and traveling around the world. David will be laid to rest tomorrow, Thursday, March 22nd, at All Souls Cemetery in Long Beach. He was a handsome young man with so much spirit and infinite potential who was taken from his family and friends much too soon. The wake will take place today, Wednesday, March 21st, at 8:00 p.m. at Holy Family Church in Artesia, California. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Korretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Marty Beagle, who passed away last Tuesday at the... I ask that we adjourn in memory of Marty Beagle, who passed away last Tuesday at the age of 90. He taught history in Los Angeles schools for more than 30 years. And doing so, he influenced countless children and their families through his excellence as a teacher, including Supervisor Xavier Oslovsky, who was a former student of his who remembers him fondly and well. But it's as a basketball coach that Marty Beagle, an Orthodox Jew, embodied our city's living history. And I say that because he helped unify students, school, and the community at a time of heightened racial tension. And so, it was through his humanity and leadership that he exemplified how Los Angeles should embrace diversity. When Beagle became Fairfax's highest varsity basketball coach, the school was mostly white and Jewish. New school boundaries in 1968 allowed for an influx of African-American students living south of Pico Boulevard. And so, the number of African-American students attending Fairfax grew from 35 to 1,000. Beagle happily welcomed and celebrated his new students and the new athletes who joined his team. And in doing so, he epitomized how to rejoice in diversity and not, not place barriers in the way. Because of such a positive and friendly attitude, Fairfax, unlike most other city schools, didn't require a court order to accomplish racial balance. Marty Beagle's team would win four straight East Valley championships. And legendary UCLA coach John Wooden said in an L.A. Times interview that we should all give Beagle credit because, quote, "You don't win games just with talent, you have to bring people together." Besides coaching at Fairfax, he also coached basketball at the West Side Jewish Community Center, Malibu High School, and L.A.'s Shelchevett High, as well as baseball at North Hollywood High. And he refereed high school, college, and NBA professional basketball contests. He was inducted by the Southern California Jewish Sports Hall of Fame when they made him an inductee in 1990. His wife Helen passed away in 1985, and he leaves behind his son Stuart and daughter Elena.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian. Ms. Perry.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Today, I would like to adjourn in memory of the late Reverend Eugene Williams. He was the executive director of the Regional Congregations and Neighborhood Organizations Training Center. He was the son of the late Juanita Tate. He was known as a preacher's preacher. Reverend Williams was a community leader in South Los Angeles and a catalyst for change. He led the charge in the early 1990s, uniting and organizing churches in the African-American communities within South Los Angeles, leveraging their common causes to provide desperately needed community services for all. He had a powerful vision of galvanizing the network of small and mid-sized churches in low-income communities behind an all-inclusive social agenda that has worked to return those communities to prominence. In 1994, with the help of Reverend Williams, the Los Angeles Metropolitan Churches began a 17-member church organization, and today it maintains a network of 40 churches. His goodwill and dedication to the communities of South Los Angeles and for his organization has been unmatched. And to the Reverend's family, his brother and his sister, his friends, his colleagues, I would like to submit and express my deepest sympathy and condolences. The second adjourning motion is in memory of Dwayne Alexander, who was taken from this earth far too soon. He was a resident of Baldwin Hills and a prolific screenwriter, playwright, music producer, music historian, and artist. And he worked for Job Corps. He was known by his family as the gentle giant Dwayne, and he started his career promoting dance music in the mid-1980s, working with Colonel Abrams and Fonda Rae. He was hired by A&amp;M Records to work on dance promotions on the east coast, where he had the opportunity to work with artists like Janet Jackson and Vesta Williams. In 1989, he was promoted to vice president of A&amp;R at EMI Manhattan Records. He left the music industry in 2000 and returned to his life's passion of writing and filmmaking. He graduated from City College in New York, where he received a bachelor's in communications. And he earned his master's in fine arts and screenwriting from the American Film Institute, earning a Henry Hathaway Screenwriting Scholarship and graduating magna cum laude with five Beta Cava honors. And in 2007, Dwayne produced and directed his first play in Los Angeles entitled Full Moon Blues, working with blues singer and Hollywood Walk of Fame legend Linda Hopkins. In 2008, Dwayne returned to his family home of Tulsa, Oklahoma, to focus on caring for his mother, Everline Wilson. But he never stopped writing. He was working for Job Corps when he passed. His latest project was a pre-production work on a screenplay for Greenwood. His work has left a lasting impact, impact on all those who have been lucky enough to know him, and he will be sincerely missed.
Any more-
Mr. Parks would like to be added to that.
Okay, please do that. All right, no more adjourning motions, members. This council meeting is adjourned.